Of the Rutherford County Regional Planning Commission for December 8th, 2025. We ask that everyone please stand at this time for our prayer and pledge of allegiance. Our most gracious heavenly Father, we're so thankful for this opportunity that you've given us to work together and to go over the issues of Rutherford County as it deals with planning and deal with land use. Father, we're thankful for Rutherford County and what it means to each and every one of us and the citizens of this county. Father, we're thankful for your son that you gave us and at this time of the season that everybody recognizes that important fact, we offer our thanks and that it's important to us too, and we ask that you continue to bless us. Father, we're so thankful for all our many blessings, but may we always remember that the things that we do have come from you. Watch over us, guide us, and protect us. We offer this prayer in your son's holy name. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You may be seated. Madam Secretary, please give the roll call and termination of quorum.
Jim Everwater, Jeff Phillips, Mike Kush.
Present.
Lee Bogle.
Here.
Charlotte Bee.
Here.
Trey Gooch.
Here.
Jim Thompson.
Here.
Michael Shirley.
Here.
Jason Beavers.
Here.
Amber Brown.
Here.
Pettis Reed.
Here.
We have a quorum.
We do have a quorum. We'll now have the approval of our minutes from the November 10th, 2025 meeting. I'll call on our vice chairman to take care of that.
I've reviewed those minutes for that meeting for November the 10th. They are in good order, and I make a motion to approve.
Have a motion approved. Do we have a second?
Second.
Have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, they have been approved. Any public comments?
No, sir.
No public comments for this evening. We'll move in. Items withdrawn or deferred?
No, sir. Nothing withdrawn or deferred.
Nothing withdrawn or deferred, and we'll go right into our new business, starting with Section A, submitted for preliminary plan approval. Item 1, Kettrel Glen, 251002, 156 lots on 150.2 acres zoned RM located along Baxter Road, Crainer Road, Castle Rock Communities, Tennessee LLC is the applicant. Mr. Demossi.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. Just for a way of review, the applicant is proposing to develop this property into 156 lots, 151 of which are for single-family residential homes. Remaining lots are for common area stormwater steplots, those kinds of things. This is a conventional subdivision. In other words, it's not a planned development, so these lots are 15,000 square feet minimum. Primary entrances along Baxter Road with secondary access proposed at Upper Glade Court in the Barrett's Corner subdivision, which also has access onto Crainer Road, and its development will utilize a step system. This item has been deferred previously from the Planning Commission to address safety concerns, especially when it comes to the road safety audit. There's been a lot of discussions when it comes to that. You know, we've had a traffic study done. There was a lot of discussion on that during our last meeting, and then there was some further discussion regarding the safety audit. That audit has been completed. Those findings have been discussed amongst staff with the applicant, as well as with our highway superintendent Greg Brooks. With that, you know, as far as we know, that this development appears to be consistent with our regulations. It meets our regulations as it's been submitted. But I will turn it over to Mike for any just general comments he may want to make about the traffic and the safety audit.
Thank you, Doug. As Doug mentioned, in the third-party traffic engineer review, they did recommend a safety audit of the rural county roads, and they did comply and perform one. And during the discussion of that, that's a little tricky because our regulations don't exactly call out that safety audits can be required. Safety is utmost importance, but so we gave the information to the highway department, and they have taken care of a lot of the improvements, the recommendations in there. Some things they, you know, won't be able to change, like moving power poles close to the road. They won't be able to move mailboxes close to the road. So some things that they can't take care of, but they have taken care of a lot of the improvements and have made great strides in that. So, but other than that, Doug, you know, Doug is correct. They've addressed our comments and have completed a safety audit, even though we might not have the authority to call out one, but they did provide that information to our highway department and present that to them.
Commissioners, comments? Commissioner?
I do have a couple of questions. Just being new, I wanted to better understand, this was only done by recommendation, a safety audit, because this was the first one that I've seen since being on the commission, so I don't know if this is something we'll continue to see or ask for, because I know, Mike, you just said that's not a part of our regulation, so I just...
It was, as you stated, it was a recommendation from the TIS study, or I should say TIS evaluation that was done by our traffic consultant. The applicant went ahead and took care of that.
So they did that just as an added layer?
Correct.
Okay, okay. And then the other question I have is just from that safety audit, are we able, if there are items in there that we would like to recommend as a part of if we approve up or down, can we truly use that as a decision, like measure, this particular audit?
Well, with the, you know, with discussion Mike had just a little bit, I think we would need to be careful with that. Now, that being said, I will also fall back on what Mike just said a moment ago about the fact that our highway superintendent has been actively taking care of a lot of those items that were recommended, things that he can take care of at least. So a lot of those things probably aren't going to be just germane for this development. It's probably germane over different parts of the county. So this isn't something, the traffic or the safety audit, excuse me, it wasn't something that we saw on just every single traffic study that we see or any review that we get. I think just when the, when they made that recommendation, they just thought, well, you know, just considering the location and everything, this might be something to look into.
Just a do-do list.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman. Thank you. I was the one that was pretty adamant about the safety audit. At our first meeting, we got, we received a presentation from the developer. We asked some clarifying questions. It was stated there that they had not really met with the highway department as it pertained to the roads in the area. I asked our legal counsel if roads, if inadequate roads were a reasonable objection to a development. He stated that their original studies stated that there were deficiencies in the area that would need to be fixed with the safety audit, and I asked about the safety audit, and that's when I found out that we don't require those until after constructions began, which was shocking to me that, because it would actually point out the things that, the deficiencies in safety. So that's why we, that's why we requested the safety audit. I wasn't at the last meeting that we talked about this in October, so I went back and watched both meetings last night again to refresh my memory on all of these things. And there were some more questions that were brought up about a lot of the maintenance issues that the highway department needed to take care of, regardless of whether or not we developed this property. And so we deferred, the commission deferred another time with the developers agreed to that deferment to give the highway department some time to address those issues. So the reason that we pushed for the safety first was because I have major concerns about safety in this area as it related to this development. So I still consider safety of the roads and traveling to be a reasonable objection to this development. So with all of that being said, I know our highway superintendent is here, and I would move that we suspend the rules to allow him to come up to the well and talk about the changes that they have made, and maybe I have some questions that I'd like to ask him specifically. That's my motion.
Commissioners, we have a request to suspend the roads, to allow the road superintendent to come forward.
Second.
Had a second? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
We'll ask that superintendent come forward at this time. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, everyone. So Greg Brooks, I'm the Rutherford County Road Superintendent, and was asked recently to maybe come because there had been a deferral that wanted some, apparently there is, the safety audit revealed some, what any reasonable person would consider standard maintenance issues. So there was some question about what the developer would be responsible for and what the highway department should be responsible for. So that's why I'm here tonight. I'd be happy to answer any questions you have, but before I do that, I want to make a few quick comments. First of all, everybody knows, and I'm the road superintendent, so that's, that puts me responsible for maintaining our current road system as it exists, the roads and drainage. So let's go through this, let's go through this safety audit just briefly, so that I can kind of give you some idea of what we do, what we try to do at the highway department. So when I was made aware of this safety audit, they sent it to me and I reviewed it. After I reviewed it, I called in our sign crew, the guys that go out and maintain our signs, erect new signs, take down signs that are no longer relevant or no longer used. We tried to follow MUTCD and everything we do, which is manual uniform traffic control devices. It's a federal publication that all counties and all states use so that there's conformity. No matter where you go, you see the same, you see the same traffic signals. So that's, that's the publication that we use when we're doing our signs. So when I called my guy into the office and I was going through him, going through with him what the recommendations of the safety audit were, after we'd talked for a few, just a few minutes, he's, Kevin said, "Well, it was, it's obvious that they were there before I was there." And I said, "What do you mean?" And he said, "Well, I just hit that area. I just, I just went through that whole area, and a lot of these things I've already done." So coincidentally, he had already made a lot of these corrections before I had the conversation with him. Now, after the conversation, we went through, because of the safety audit, we went through some specific items that he did not correct, which he does a good job, don't get me wrong. But there was some additional stuff that he went out and took care of. So that being said, let's, let me look at page 17 of the safety audit. I don't know if you have that in front of you or not, but some of these recommended low-cost improvements, we'll go with Baxter Road first. One of their recommendations was to add white pavement markings at the edge of pavement. For whatever reason, it's probably because of how narrow Baxter Road is. The fog line, the edge line, did not get put on when the center line got restriped. That was probably a call I made years ago because, you know, the traffic volume and again, you know, the narrow lanes out there, I just didn't feel like it was warranted to spend the money to put the edge lines on. But, and that has not been, that has not been corrected. But I don't know if any of you have gone through that area recently, but a lot of these roads have been restriped. Baxter Road did not get restriped, which leads me to believe that it's probably on our paving, our short paving list. It's probably something we're planning on repaving soon, or we would have restripped it when we restripped the subsequent roads in the area. So anyway, we didn't, we have not restriped it, but move the stop sign to the right-hand side of the roadway on Baxter Road. I cannot tell you why that stop sign was on the left-hand side of the road, other than it was easier when they put it in years and years ago. But that has been corrected. It's now in the correct location. The stop bars that they recommend at Woodbury Pike and Ringwall would be part of the striping operation. We have not done. Trim back vegetation in the right-of-way along Ringwall Road. That's something that we have done. Our bush hog crews do a good job. We have an armed bush hog that cuts back the higher vegetation, and in the summertime, that armed bush hog follows the little side bush hogs around and makes that cut that's hard to get to in the grass, for the most part. And in the wintertime, they spend all winter going around and cutting the limbs and that kind of thing. So that's done. So, and that's, you know, that's just Baxter Road. It goes on to speak about Ringwall and Crainer, cleaning the bridge cupboards. That's the drainage holes, if you will, in the side of a bridge deck. All that's been taken care of. Paddle boards have been added at all paddle boards. I call them paddle boards. They're really, you know, if you follow MUTCD, like I said, I just did, they're really object markers, but they've all been installed anywhere that there's a fixed object, like a bridge end or a curb from a box culvert, all that. They've been put up. They're new. They're at the correct recommended height. So all that kind of thing has been taken care of. Now, some of the other recommendations that they made about moving utility poles and mailboxes and historic rock fences and that kind of thing, you know, that's, that's just not something I could do. It does talk about sharp drop-offs from the edge of pavement into the ditch, and I think that's kind of indicative of what you find when you get on our rural roads around here. That's just from years of being repaved, and every time they're repaved, they try to widen them out just a little, and you wind up with a straight-off edge of pavement. So all that to say, a lot of this stuff that this traffic's, no, that the safety audit suggested is, in my opinion, routine maintenance.
Mr. Brooks, at this time, do you have a timeline for paving and striping and the improvements for Baxter Road?
Well, I...
That the county's paying for?
Well, if I suggested that we're making improvements out there, then I apologize because that's not, that's not what I was saying. What I was saying is the routine maintenance, the resurfacing of the road as it exists, and then the subsequent restriping that would go along with that resurfacing. But as far as improvement, that's different, in my opinion, than routine maintenance.
So no improvements, just maintenance?
No scheduled improvements, no road widening, no improved shoulders, that type of improvement. I assume that's what you're asking about.
Mr. Chairman, Shirley.
Mr. Brooks, some of the questions that I'm going to ask you, I know the answer to you already, but I know that some other people on the commission do not, so please don't look at me funny when I know you know I know the answer to some of these things. Can you tell the commission the difference between prescriptive right-of-ways and deeded right-of-ways as far as the county's roads are concerned, and how the difference causes or poses some challenges to your department as far as making those improvements to widening the road?
I'll do my best to explain it to the best of my ability. We have Mr. Christians here who can go into greater detail, but basically, a prescriptive right-of-way is when your deed calls to a pin in the center line of the road. So that makes that right-of-way prescriptive. There's been a road there for years. It is a public road. It is in our road book. It is our responsibility to maintain it, but it's prescriptive right-of-way, so we don't own that right-of-way. Now, a deeded right-of-way, the county actually owns that right-of-way. So we can go in, in that case, we can go in and we can make improvements beyond what's there now. We can, we can make improvements beyond maintenance, but when it's prescriptive, that's, we cannot. And that's state law. That's not my rule. That's the way it is.
So for example, you mentioned Baxter Road is too narrow to put the white line on the edges. By the time you put the line on both sides, then it makes the road even more narrow. Is that, is Baxter Road prescriptive or deeded?
Some of both, as most of our roads are.
Okay. So what prevents you from going in and what prevents you from going in and widening Baxter Road?
The prescriptive right-of-ways.
And so if, what would it take for you to go in and make those improvements? I guess what I'm, what I'm trying to lead you here is, how much is, how much would it cost, or would you even have the ability to go in and widen that road?
Well, we have, we have 986 miles of county roads, and just without knowing exactly, without having it in front of me, you know, 600 of those are rural county roads, 350 or 60 are subdivision roads, subdivision streets. So of those rural county roads, an overwhelming majority of those do not have improved shoulder or anything like that, and most of them, all of them have some prescriptive right-of-ways. So Baxter Road would not be on my hot list if I were going to go through all of the steps to make improvements to a road. It would be based more on average daily trips, average daily traffic than, than it would be, okay, we got a development coming, so we need to make road improvements out here on Baxter Road. I mean, goodness sakes, you know, go to Barfield Road, it's like I-24. I mean, if you're going to make improvements, you wouldn't start on Baxter Road. But all that to say, you know, Baxter Road is not, it is a two-lane rural county road. It's not, we have, we have developments that exist on, on one lane rural county roads. So there's that.
What, what would these roads, would we allow any developer to build a road that looks like Baxter Road?
No, developer, developer today would be required to build per our sub-rig subdivision regulations.
How, how would...
50-foot right-of-ways, 20-foot of pavement, four feet of shoulder, ditches, ore, curb and gutter.
We wouldn't allow mailboxes right up on, like, basically, a lot of the things that are in this safety audit as deficiencies would, would not be allowed if someone were building a road from scratch?
I would assume that our subdivision regulations would speak to a clear zone beyond edge of pavement.
Greg, are you, when you made that statement just now, and let me make sure I understood the question, you're talking about within side the subdivision?
Correct.
Those roads would have to meet our current standards? Not, not to be confused that Baxter Road, like its current condition, would not have to be improved because of that subdivision?
Correct.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. I know your department also works a lot, public works with drainage. The safety audit mentioned several issues or concerns related to substandard drainage in the area. Can you tell our commission what conditions you, your department frequently has had to address and how frequently maybe in that Crainer, Baxter, Ringwall area?
Well, we do not have, we do not have a, that I'm aware of, and I looked at it briefly this afternoon, I do not believe we have any, that we have any public works drainage easements in that immediate area. However, we do have, on Crainer Road, we do have some repetitive flooding that occurs, you know, when there's been periods of heavy rain. So it's low and it doesn't drain well. Like a lot of our county, it relies on sinkholes and that type of thing to, to handle the stormwater. So we do have some repetitive flooding on Crainer Road.
So when, when roads are, you haven't been able to go out there and make any big drastic changes because we don't have drainage right-of-way in that area?
That's accurate.
So nature just has, we close the roads and they stay closed until the water goes down?
Correct.
Do you, do you all, does your department go out and look at all of the culverts that are out there and maintain them, or is that the responsibility of the homeowners to keep their culverts clean?
Some of both. You're speaking about the driveway culverts.
Um, I believe that...
We have culverts under the road as well, but I assume you're talking, since you've mentioned homeowners, I assume you're talking about the driveway culverts.
I'm, I'm not sure, well, I think it's a little bit of both if I'm looking at the safety audit. It looks like some of these are people's driveway, and then it says Ringwall North, Ringwall Road North District. That looks like it goes under another county road perhaps, but so...
So in, in our regulations, during the construction plan phase after preliminary, we, at every outfall, we have the ability, it is in our regulations, for them to evaluate the next two downstream drainage structures. So if they are undersized or, you know, need of repair, we can make them repair or replace or upsize. So we have that ability to do that with a construction plan review.
And my last question, and this is, do you have any concerns with the traffic, 150 homes, 10 car trips per home per day, 1,500 car trips out there in that area? Do you have any concerns with the conditions of the roads in that area to handle that amount of traffic?
However, I have those same concerns on most of the developments that I see come through here. I mean, that, this is not, this particular development is not an anomaly. The difference, the difference between this development and the last several is the fact that this safety audit was asked for and performed. That's the difference. It's not, it's not that the roads are that much different. It's the safety audit, in my opinion. That's, that's, that's why we're having this conversation about this particular development. We're kind of singling it out, if you will.
And again, I'll get up on my soapbox. If y'all see something that you feel that we need to include in our subdivision regulations, make a recommendation and we can add that to our subdivision regulations. So I mean, it's, it has to get approved through this body, but, or anything in the zoning ordinance would have to go through the county commission and this body, so...
Mike, isn't that under review right now, where you all are reviewing the regulations for...
We are, we are doing that right now.
Okay.
So if you have some recommendations, feel free to pass them along to us.
Well, I'm, I also want to say that I'm certainly not offended by this safety audit. I think it's a, it can be a great tool for, in the toolbox of the highway department. You know, it pointed out some things that I had overlooked, so it's not, it's not a bad thing. I'm not suggesting we do or don't on every one. I'm simply saying that the reason we're having this conversation about this particular development is because the safety audit was asked for.
And, and it was because it was mentioned in the traffic study that, that there were some problems in the area. So I appreciate your department, and y'all do a fantastic job in responding to the concerns that we have, and I know certainly anytime I've ever called to have something looked at, your department's been right on it, and you've done a good job. So I appreciate your time here tonight. My last question, and I will leave you alone tonight, is you mentioned some of the differences between roads being built now versus what is out there. I think Commissioner Kush at the last meeting talked about, a lot of these roads where wagon trails turned to gravel, roads turned to pavement, and so there's clearly, they are clearly not built to today's standards. But the things that you mentioned about the clear zone and the width of road, sight views, it rises and falls, it is accurate to say that all of those requirements are to improve safety?
That is accurate, yes.
Thank you.
I got, I got some questions here as well. Mr. Greg, on, I'm not familiar right off with Baxter Road. I'm sure I've been on it, but let me tell you, I rode Thompson Road out there behind Rockville School, right next to Pinnacle Hills out there. I just pulled it up to kind of get a comparison, and it confirms exactly what you're saying as far as what's being approved. Because with 99's situation with those schools there, I take Thompson Road frequently coming through. I make it much better on that narrow road than I do 99, just because of the traffic.
Right.
My question is this, Thompson and Baxter, are they similar in width?
They are, in, in, excuse me, in a lot of locations, yes, they are.
Okay. And then the safety audit, I'd like to have that... Okay. And then the safety audit, I'd like to have that ran one more time in my head. Who pays for a safety audit when you are asked to do a safety audit? Is that?
That was, right.
The developer. And who asks that developer to do a safety audit again? Just if I'm a developer, how do I know I'm going to get to build it versus not getting to build it? Who makes that call?
That was a recommendation that was made from the traffic study. They, developer prepared the traffic study. One of the recommendations from our third-party consultant was that they look at doing a safety audit. So that's where that came from.
But let me clarify, they have no jurisdiction to force that. That was recommended, but they are not a government, that should have been approved by this body. That snuck in under the radar. They do not have the authority to do legislation like that to put that onus on the developer.
And who are you speaking of when you say they, Mike?
Yeah, sometimes I color outside the lines and they have to be brought back in, so.
Okay.
They agreed to do that. SEC, when they, in their presentation said, we're going to have to do it anyway, so we'll just go ahead and do it. They volunteered, we requested it and they said, yeah, we'll do that. That was in our meeting.
All right. And then another question I had, as far as the traffic study, what triggers the traffic study, just so I know?
In the zoning ordinance, we do have a section, Chapter 11, I believe, that specifically addresses when traffic studies are required. Now, there are certain thresholds that we look at. There is also what I would call like a catch-all type phrase, if you will, that if the conditions are, we feel are warranted from a staff level, that we can require one. So it's all in the zoning ordinance in Chapter 11, to answer your question.
Well, you know, we've got another one on the agenda back tonight. I know Mr. Bowden, I know has got them, and we had a conversation the last time it was up about traffic lights and all that. I'm still kind of at a loss when we bring in a traffic study and there's some things deemed necessary. When does that trigger? And, because I know it's going to come up with theirs again tonight, or at least it'd be something I'm going to ask if it's not answered up on the presentation. So I think it'll help me get past that now.
Anything else, Mr. Brooks?
That was a question, that was actually a question, I had a question about the traffic study. When we run into a situation where the traffic study deems certain amount of work has to be done, what does this body do with it? That was a question for me. On the traffic study for this project, is anything we deemed is necessary to be done with Baxter Road? Because I thought that's what was doing traffic.
I think, and Mike, correct me if I'm wrong, I believe that the recommendations of the study, they did not recommend any turn lanes into the development. Again, the traffic or the safety audit was one of those recommendations which was performed. Now, as far as any kind of road widening or anything like that, nothing was recommended. The applicant did the traffic study, our consultant reviewed it and thought the methodology was sound, made some, you know, general recommendations and things. But there weren't any recommendations for any kind of widening or any turn lanes into the development. It just didn't meet the warrants for that. Now, understand, of course, something else that we need to think about from an improvement standpoint is, and we've talked about this in the past, is regarding the projects themselves, are any improvements that are deemed, well, any improvements that the commission may desire to have done out there? We have to remember that any requirements that are placed on them have to meet, you know, rational nexus proportionality standards, you know, based on case law from the Supreme Court. You know, obviously, if one development cannot be responsible for, you know, paving or widening five miles of road, you know, there has to be some, again, proportionality behind that. There has to be a nexus between the impact that the development is going to create versus what you're asking them to do. So that is something else to keep in mind.
All right. Mr. Brooks, one other question. I'm going to be like the other commissioner, I'll be quiet. As far as a capital plan, I understand we're more of a maintenance plan for our county, and I get what that role is.
Right.
But I sure would lean on the highway department to tell us what the capital plan is to help fix some of the issues. What is the plan? What's the discussion right now for this county? To say we're going to improve X number of miles a year to address the growth we're facing?
Well, unfortunately, you're talking to the department that is in charge of the maintenance of the existing roads. So we're going to maintain whatever we're handed, whatever this committee says okay to. We're going to do our best to maintain it. As far as a capital improvement plan, the state of Tennessee probably has a capital improvement plan, but the highway department does not. We try to make these, we have, since I've taken office, I have tried to take us from just being a maintenance department to being an improvement department as well. And so where we can, when we can, we do make these improvements, some of these improvements. We've done miles and miles of paved shoulders. We've done countless curve improvements, geometry improvements, you know, super elevation in curves and widening out curves. And so we do try to do, and, you know, a lot of the work we do, quite honestly, when we take on things that are outside of our normal scope of maintenance are school-related. When we see that there's going to be a new school campus developed, then I will go and look at the road system around that area to see if there are some improvements that we can, some reasonable improvements that we can make when we have time. We also look at, we also look at our Titans website, Titan website, I said Titans, excuse me, Titan website to see what crashes, you know, any areas where there are frequent accidents. And we go out to those intersections or those curves and try to make improvements when we can, where we can. So, but a five-year capital improvement plan, quite honestly, does not exist.
Thank you, sir.
So I'd go back then, Mr. Chairman, to the staff. I'm hearing them say that there's not really any issues with this plan as presented.
Let me call us back in session. Okay.
Well, to answer your question, I think what I said during the staff presentation was that it appears to meet our requirements and our regulations as they're currently written.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Brooks said that there were other subdivisions in the county on this road, but I'd like to think we have learned from our mistakes and that we have, we are making progress in correcting those mistakes. You know, what is it? But what I understand, we did not get to see the traffic study or the safety study except at the other meeting unless you requested it. So our, the photos that we saw when it was up last time is kind of blurred now. But I did get to review it a little bit. And a letter that was sent to us from the Neil, the traffic department, or no, the submitted, TSI, sent a letter to the planning office. It says, "We have two, including remarks as advancement." And in the first point at the bottom, it says, "Mitigation finally determined by the road safety audit should be made a condition of approval for the development." So the traffic study suggested the safety study, correct? So the professionals that we hired to look at traffic in the area, which there's not a lot of traffic in the area because it's a rural road. I can understand how the traffic, you know, because there's not much there. But they thought, they were so concerned about the safety, they recommended a safety study. And in the letter to planning, suggested that any approval should be a condition of the mitigations found through the safety study. So, you know, they are also concerned about the safety of this development in that area.
Doug, so this meets all of our zoning requirements, all of our subdivision regs? They've not refused to do any of what was required in the traffic study, right?
That's a correct statement.
I'm going to make the motion we approve.
Second.
A motion to approve and a second for the discussion.
I'd like to hear from the developer.
We've had a request to hear from the developer. Good evening, sir.
Evening. I'm Patrick Carroll with Council Rock Communities.
You have questions for?
Maybe I didn't make myself clear.
Well, we couldn't.
I can hear. Is that any better?
Mr. Chairman, yeah, that's better.
Thank you. Tell us about your development, what type of houses you're going in there, the materials you're going to use, what's a lot size, what type of development are you building?
Okay. So basically, a lot size is 50 by 125. Most of our lots are that size. We will have housing anywhere from 1,300 square feet to about 2,600 square feet. Price range from the mid 400s to the 600s. And all of our homes will be masonry product. That'll be either brick, stone, or hardy on those.
Pretty much what I wanted to make sure that everyone knew, what type of development was going in there. They're not small lot sizes, they're not vinyl homes. They're homes that will probably be there in pretty good shape 50 years.
Correct. That's correct. Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, do you agree with the findings of the safety audit?
As far as, you know, we are calling it a safety audit, but 99% of that is a maintenance, you know, just a maintenance audit.
It's called a roadway safety audit.
Correct.
That's the official title. Do you agree with the contents of the roadway safety audit?
Yes. Yes.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Do you have, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, do you have any other developments in Rutherford County? Do you have any other developments in Rutherford County?
Currently, we have one over on, that is called Mason Brook. And it's 49 lots. It is not in the county, though, it's in the city. So we have not started construction there yet. We are just now finishing up that development.
If I'm not mistaken, you're not only the developer, but you're going to be building the homes.
So we're both. We're the developer and we are the home builder as well. So.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Say anyone else? Thank you, sir. We have a motion, we have a second on here, and we're going to ask for the secretary to please call the roll.
Mr. Chairman, I still have questions. We're still in discussion, correct? We're still in discussion, correct?
We're still in discussion, but I'm ready to call the roll.
May I ask a question of our legal counsel?
You may.
Mr. Christensen, it is still a, I'm within my rights to vote no on this motion out of concerns for safety. Is that an accurate statement?
I think on the way that this current motion is framed, the answer is yes. You can have whatever reason that you want to have to say no. If you're concerned about the safety audit being a condition of the approval, I think that that would be acceptable too, because the developer has stated that they're willing to comply with that. So if you want to make that an explicit condition for the approval, that they comply with the safety audit requirements, I think that that is fine as well. But that's not the current motion.
Is that the intention of the person who made this motion is that the developer, who said he agreed with everything that was in here, to be in compliance with it?
My motion was to, with staff comments.
Does staff comments say that we're going to follow all of the recommendations within this safety audit?
I would personally prefer, if that is what you are meaning in this motion, it's made more explicit because in six months' time, I don't want to be having this discussion if this comes up during construction plan review. Should this be approved?
Is that your determination, Commissioner?
I'm staying with my original motion.
Well, I would appeal to my fellow commissioners, I'm going to be voting no on this motion the way that it's stated because it's not clear that we're making any changes to the roads leading to this development where we're going to be putting 1,500 car trips potentially per day on roads that we cannot fix. And we know that the safety audit that they've agreed to is requiring for those. Thank you.
Doug and Mike, I'm not sure that's a true statement. The traffic study, does it or does it not say that there is no needed work on Baxter Road?
It addressed the level of service at various intersections. And because of the lack of the volume of traffic, that they were all essentially level of service A.
Okay. So a professional engineer on the developer's side was hired to do a traffic study?
Yes, sir.
And then our professional engineering group reviewed that and agreed?
Yes, sir.
So we are not professional engineers nor traffic experts, but we're basically arguing the fact that we know better than two professional traffic engineers. And they are saying that is not warranted, which if you vote to deny, would clearly open up a litigation cause. I sit on steering every month and I look at the litigation list and it's filled with frivolous and silly lawsuits. You, we cannot deny or add anything to a developer that is not warranted in the traffic study.
Or in our regulations.
Or in our regulations. If we would like to change our regulations, we can do that. We can set triggers, but that has to be blessed by attorneys and all kinds of legal counsel to make sure we are still staying within our bounds as a county to not inflict legal or unjustified pain to a developer, correct?
Yes, sir.
So I second the original motion.
Mr. Chairman, this, because I want to be clear, I know maybe not everybody received a copy of the traffic study. But, well, I have a clarifying question, I guess. The traffic study conducted a level of service for Crainer, Baxter, and Ringwald. Was it for the entire roads or was it only for the intersections of those, the traffic study?
The intersections that were selected for the memorandum of understanding. So we sit down with the developer as engineer and our third-party consultant and say, hey, we're going to study these intersections or roads and this is what we agreed upon. All of those came back as a level of service A.
And the studies both said, they also said that, let me find my quote here, that the roadways were supporting these traffic volumes were not necessarily engineered to support the current design guidelines.
Yes.
And suggested that we do the safety audit, that specifically said, do the safety audit. And the safety audit says we're deficient in many of the concerns that the safety audit shows are things that we can't, that can't be fixed. I agree, like, it shouldn't be on this developer, but it shouldn't be on the county to go in eminent domain people's yards so that we can widen the roads and improve the ditches and things to improve safety that the safety audit says we should do. It's just.
We'll take one more discussion. I think Commissioner P. has something to say.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Kusch, you said that we, the professional engineer, the professional engineer that we hired suggested we have the safety study that shows that we, it needs improvement. And our lawyer in-house just stated we could make it, repeat that. You said you could make it a condition of the approval as the engineer did in his letter to planning, said it should be a condition of approval.
I'm calling a discussion closed and I'm asking for the vote from the secretary. Please call the roll.
Jeff Phillips?
Let me just go back to the motion. It's a motion to approve with staff comments.
It's a motion to approve with staff comments.
Yes.
Mike Kush?
Yes.
Lee Bogel?
Yes.
Charlotte P. Trey Gooch?
Yes.
Jim Thompson?
Yes.
Michael Shirley?
No.
Jason Beavers?
Yes.
Amber Brown?
Yes.
Hettis Reed?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Motion does carry. Moving now, item two, Cottontown Square subdivision, twenty-five-one-zero-zero-eight, one hundred and twenty-four lots on two hundred and five acres, Zoned R M., located along Armstrong Valley Road and North Road. Century Communities of Tennessee LLC is the applicant. Mr. Demossi.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. This development is looking to, or this developer is looking to divide this property into one hundred and twenty-four lots, as you stated. Of course, there'd be stormwater step-in common area lots. It's also a conventionally zoned subdivision like the one we just looked at, meaning it's not a planned development. So, these will have minimum of fifteen thousand square foot lots. This is similar to the Springs subdivision, which is located on the other side of Armstrong Valley Road in this area. You can see three access, well, more than that, but three access points off of North Road. You have two of which access a larger pod of lots, if you will, and then one that accesses a smaller pod right there, I guess that'd be right closer to the intersection of North Road and Armstrong Valley. You also see that there is one access point off of Armstrong Valley Road as well into this development. Traffic study was submitted to staff, and again, was reviewed by our traffic consultant. I'll have Mike discuss that here in more details in a minute. There's still a few outstanding comments on this. Most of our major items have been taken care of. There's still a few tweaks on this one regarding things like some additions of lot numbers on the mail kiosk lots, adding a landscape plan and a photometric plan upon a construction drawings, if this were to be approved. This has gone through several renditions between the developer and staff before it's come to you. You can see the master plan that Mike has up on the monitor right there. One of the concerns we had had to deal with traffic calming in this development. You can see that, especially on that, that'd be the western section. As you're looking at the plan on here, it'd be the top section there, you can see a series of roundabouts there. We were concerned about traffic safety as far as excessive speeds and things along long straightaways. You can see what the developer has done. They have put in a series of roundabouts, three different roundabouts, to help with the traffic in those areas, to kind of slow it down a little bit. So, that is just something I did want to point out, but like I said, this has gone through, you know, several reviews for staff. I'll turn it over to Mike to speak more specifically about some of those traffic items, but I just wanted to at least point that out before he took over with the discussion. So, go ahead, Mike.
Right. Douglas is correct. We had some reservations about the long straightaways in this development, and they proposed these three traffic roundabouts in this location. We felt that this smaller pod near North Road, which is on this side, the north is to the right, if, for reference, and Armstrong Valley is this section here. We felt with these curves and the short distances, that would help slow the traffic down, and we are asking that they also reduce the speed limit in the subdivision to twenty miles per hour. The traffic study looked at, let me get to my maps, so they did look at several intersections in the area. This is the property here, this is North Road at the bottom, Armstrong Valley at the top. They looked at Armstrong Valley and North, they looked at Thompson and Armstrong, they looked at North and Thompson, and all, let's see, one, two, three, four entrances, three of them on North Road and one on Armstrong Valley. And again, because of the low amount of traffic on North Road, no turn lanes were required or on Armstrong Valley. The only exception was the intersection of Thompson, Jurgen, and Armstrong. They did say that it, let's see, I'll try to make sure I say this correctly, that at the intersection will be needed, sorry, not an intersection, a signal will most likely be needed at this intersection, but it will be needed with or without this development. There's so much you can kind of see in the area. There's a lot of growth in the, in the area from the city developments, and they felt that Armstrong Valley is a free flow, there's no, it's a two-way stop. There's a stop at Thompson and Jurgen, so Armstrong Valley is a free-flow condition. And the only leg that was having an issue was this Thompson Lane issue. And if you know where this is, unfortunately, there is a Box Culvert Bridge right here. So, if this were a case anywhere else, it would be easy, not easy, but easier to add a turn lane and, you know, make a left and right turn lane out of here, maybe do something else at these legs as well. But this is the leg that caused the issues, and they thought that during this development period of this project, a, most likely a signal will be needed here, but they didn't think this development was contributing to that, that amount of traffic. So, they didn't make that a recommendation for this development. Let's see. The review observed traffic study did not evaluate the need, oh, they didn't evaluate turn lanes, but because of the low levels of traffic that they counted, they didn't require that they do turn lane warrants, so on North Road or Armstrong Valley. So, that was our third-party review essentially, in a nutshell. So. Any questions for me? Thank you.
Mr. Bogel?
Mr. Hughes, did they look at it during schooltime traffic as well?
Yes. That's one of our requirements, that they do that.
Because I know that's pretty heavily traffic.
It is, it is. Yes, and I, I thought that as well. We double-checked and made sure that all the Rockvale schools were in session when they.
So, it's adequately represented? Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, the other thing I see on here says there's several outstanding comments. Can you go over the outstanding comments?
Yes, sir, I can. Let's see. Our engineering department just wanted to say that, Mike, you might have to help me out with this, a PC and a PT label, that's.
Point of curvature, important tangency. It's when the curve begins and when it ends. It's just a nomenclature on the centerline stationing.
Yeah, our fire marshal has a comment in here that the fire hydrant spacing is not sufficient. Now, that's something that we'll get another shot at, and I made the applicant aware of that a little earlier when I talked with the weather development team at least. Our highway department did have several comments on here, our public works engineer. I would wager, they say that a lot of these are probably addressed already. Mr. Locum was, you know, his wife just had a child, and he's been out for several weeks, just came back today, so he hasn't had a chance to go through a lot of these. So, I would say that a good number of these, about, you know, locating drainage regions, making sure they're shown properly, things like that, is what was, he was, things that he was looking at. But again, those are things that we'll double-check. From my standpoint, looking at the site plans that they had for the mail kiosks, they do need to show a, or do need to provide a landscape plan and a photometric plan for both of these. There is a note on their responses to our comments that they would provide those upon construction drawing, should this be approved. I'm fine with that. These are generally staff-approved anyway. We've left that as an open comment. What Mike's looking at right here is actually our plan review system. You can see all the different arrows and little post-it note, for lack of a better word, that we've got on here. So, a lot of these are still open, so we know that they're there, so that when we start looking at construction drawings, we'll make sure that those things are addressed. But those are pretty much the comments that are left. Nothing that I would say would rise to the level of any kind of a deferral or anything like that. The plan does appear to be in good order, just with some tweaks.
They originally had several of the lots inside the stream buffer, the flood study for Armstrong Branch, the, this major creek that runs through here was terminated a little bit farther north, and they commissioned a hydrologist to study that, so they have continued that on. And several of these lots will, and I'll try to zoom in so you can see, several of these lots will address that. This is kind of a flood zone here and here, so these will have to be elevated. They do have an area of compensating cut, and, let's see, one else? Oh, we asked them to talk to C U D about how C U D wants these pods of soils to be carved off, and they said that they will do that. Let's see, what else? That's mainly it. They've addressed most of our comments. Like I said, there are a few open ones shown here, but all in all, the plans are in good order, and we believe that we can handle these at this stage and also at the construction plan phase.
Mr. Chairman? Mike, did you say that they will be contributing to the stoplight at Thompson or not?
They felt like they didn't, it would not, this, that would be needed with or without this development, and the small number of, I'll go back to the map, the small number of trips that would be coming this way for this development were negligible in that, that traffic count.
Are you talking about at Armstrong Valley and Thompson?
Yes.
I was going to ask you, is that not where you were talking about the Box Culvert?
Yes, sir. Right, that's.
Because that field out there, is that not where Salem Landing is going to be expanding?
That, this is Salem Landing over here. This is another.
Is there not another expansion getting ready to happen in that area?
This is under review in the city.
Right there, that's under contract, that's the Pike property.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
And if you go, I can try to get there real quick.
So, that'll have more effect on that, that little section right there than this subdivision?
Yes, yes. And that's kind of what we were thinking, too. If you look at, the city has sewer lines shown on their GIS maps, you can see this property has sewer all around it, you know, and touching in several locations. So, we feel that this is probably going to be brought into the city pretty soon, and improvements will be made at this intersection.
Yeah, the city will require that road.
Yeah, I'm kind of like Commissioner P. was on that last one we approved. I can't debate with the engineers and all of that, but I can tell you that you need a red light at Thompson and Armstrong right now.
Yes, sir.
If you've ever been there by morning, it's backed up. If anybody tell me the subdivision won't contribute to needing a red light, but you're right, it's not causing the need for the, for a red light today, because there's already a need for a red light at that spot. So, I got to trust engineers. I'm going to lean back on my last vote, and I'll probably do the same on this.
As a commissioner, I get that call every other day, and they're wanting flashing lights down there at the back road that goes into the school on Thompson Road. So, yeah, know all about that.
Yeah. Doug, is there any way to talk to the city about kind of what their plans are on that? I don't know if anybody submitted anything, I just know somebody's got.
Well, we actually have a meeting with them Wednesday, I believe. We get together with them quarterly, generally quarterly, and our next meeting is this coming Wednesday. We have lunch, and then I'll make sure that this is brought up, just to ask them, hey, what's going on with this? And we'll relay this conversation that we had today at planning commissions.
Mr. Chair, you know, I'm not a traffic engineer either, but I do drive around the county, and it makes me question the traffic studies that do not require turning lanes in, into subdivisions or in most areas of the county, if you drive around. Now, are those, those are made with the development fully built out?
Yes, they look at.
I'd love to know their standards for a turning lane, because if you drive around the county, you would say most of them need one.
Right. And it's, it's based on the traffic, the speed limit of the road and the opposing traffic that you're facing, you know? How many cars are coming against you where you have to wait to turn left into a development? And that's, that's what they do, they count the existing conditions, how many cars or trips are out there right now, how many cars are going to be gone, are going to be added to it during the development phase of this project without the development, and then how many cars are going to be added with the development at that development phase? So, there's three things that they look at.
And is that something we can address with subdivision regs on some of these things that people want to see? I mean, is that something we could require?
Well, I think it's something that, like Mike had talked about earlier, you know, if there's ideas and things that you have to let us know, I think that is something that does warrant further study. Now, what does a solution look like as far as requiring turn lanes and developments? That's something we're going to have to explore. Like I said, you want to come up with something that's defensible, or defendable, I should say. You don't want to come up with something that's arbitrary, because then that regulation can be challenged, and then you're, you have issues. So, you know, obviously, I don't think anybody in here would want to see a turn lane for a five-lot development, you know? We have to, has to be reasonable, whatever it comes up with, but where is that line drawn? Is it drawn at fifteen, twenty, thirty? You know, I don't know, I don't have a good answer for that. Is it something that we can look at and research? Yes. But I don't have an answer as to what that might look like at this point.
And to be, just to drop in a little bit of Plan Rutherford, of course, this one doesn't fall under Plan Rutherford, but this right here is in the, a country suburban block that we have there, which is designed for density construction. So, it's setting where it's supposed to be and what it's supposed to be doing.
And I think part of what's going on with this development, which may be lessen the need for any recommendations for turn lanes, is the fact that they have so many ways in and out, and the fact that the two pods, for lack of a better word, aren't really interconnected. You only have a certain number, especially in that smaller pod, it's a relatively small number. Even in the larger pod, it's just not a huge amount of traffic, cars coming in and out. So, I think that played a part in that, because you can see right here, like Mike's got that up, you know, the smaller pod, that one right there closer to the intersection, there's just not a lot of home, there's not going to be a lot of traffic right there. And with the other one, like I said, it's larger, there's more lots there, but it just doesn't rise to the level of requiring a turn lane based on the analysis that they did.
And to add to that, I've authored quite a few traffic impact studies and reviewed quite a few, and a very important element that I know you all are aware of is how that traffic gets distributed. The distribution projections from that subdivision or a particular development, how that gets distributed into the network impacts whether that meets turn lane requirements or not. I know you guys are well aware of that.
Correct.
And hone in on that element, because you can really skew one if you're not careful, if you don't have, that's why it's important to have local knowledge of the areas, and while we stress that.
Right, and you're absolutely right. And every time we have one of our scoping meetings, that's one of the things we talk about. And, you know, we talk about that. We've even had some make changes based on, well, they make this recommendation, well, after talking with our traffic consultant, well, we don't know if we like that, we think it makes more sense this, knowing the local area.
Knowing the local areas is key as well, because you can look at any area across the county, and somebody distribute it completely different if they don't have the local knowledge or at least regional knowledge of how it's impacting.
Correct.
Thank you for that.
Another discussion. Would you like to hear from the developer? Will the developer or the representative come forward?
Good evening. My name is Trey Woodruff, I'm with Century Communities. What questions can I answer for you, sir?
Could you use your mic? Commissioner, could you use your mic? If it worked?
If you would, please, just tell us about your plans, size of the lots, type of houses you're going to build, materials that you plan on using, and, and once again, who are you and where are you from?
Yes, sir. So, again, my name is Trey Woodruff from Century Communities. In this particular neighborhood, we're doing one hundred and twenty-four.
Where are you from?
Originally from Tallahassee, Florida.
No. Where, where is your company located?
My company is current, is headquartered in Colorado. My company is current, is headquartered in Colorado, but my division here in Nashville has been responsible for the last seven years we've been here building. Currently, we have communities at Davenport Station and Slatewood, which is in City Murfreesboro. So this would be another, another great community for us to bring on board. The square footage of the lots are 15,000 square foot minimums, but we have certainly strived to get larger than 15,000 square foot, and we're going to continue to find ways to tweak that and make them larger. We think having a backyard is a great opportunity for the homeowners. In particular, the floor plans here vary from 2,000 square feet up to over 3,200 square feet, so we are offering a lot of different varieties, from side load homes with three car garages to three bays facing the street. We're varying different roof lines, and we're going to do things like board and batten, stone and brick. The features are really amazing, we've just gone through a new plan lineup, lots of farmhouses is a big focus for us in this area.
And you plan to have home ownership, not rentals?
Yes, ma'am, that is our plan. As with anything, with the market, we'll dictate, you know, what we can do, but for us, we are a single family development opportunity here. We like to sell our homes. Any other questions I can answer for you?
Any other questions for the developer? Thank you, sir. Commissioners, other comments or a motion?
Move to approve of staff comments.
A motion to approve of staff comments, and a second. For the discussion, please call the roll.
Jeff Phillips?
Yes.
Mike Kush?
Yes.
Lee Vogel?
Yes.
Charlotte P.?
Yes.
Trey Gooch?
Yes.
Jim Thompson?
Yes.
Michael Shirley?
Yes.
Jason Beavers?
Yes.
Amber Brown?
Yes.
Pettis Reed?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Motion does carry. Moving into item three, Hawthorne Hollow, 251009, 164 lots on 105.34 acres, Zoned RM, located along Central Valley Road. Century Communities of Tennessee LLC is the applicant.
Yes, sir, thank you. The applicant, as you stated, is proposing, proposing to divide this property, or these properties, I should say, into 164 lots. Again, not all residential, some of these are stormwater, step, common area. It's a conventionally zoned development, meaning it's not a planned development, again, minimum 15,000 square foot lots, like the other two we've looked at tonight. Manor Farm and Madison Cove subdivisions are both immediately to the west and have similar lot sizes and requirements, 15,000 square foot minimum. This development does show one access point onto Central Valley Road, along with connections to both Manor Farms and also to Madison Cove. There was a traffic study that was submitted to staff and was also reviewed by our traffic consultant. Again, I will let Mike discuss the particulars of that here in just a moment. We did have several outstanding comments that needed to be addressed, most of them have been. Something that we do need to discuss tonight and have a little bit more discussion on, I believe, is something that we brought up during our last application we just looked at with Tottington Square, and that had to do with the traffic calming. You can see with this development, there is a, again, there, there are some significant straightaways here in this development. We've worked with the applicant to try to identify some ways to maybe break that up a little bit, some calming type measures into the development to help with that. I know the applicant's design representative is present, and there is a diagram that he would like to discuss on that, that he had submitted to us. Maybe the, looking at the ability to have some sort of like a median, a raised median there to help with, you know, some traffic calming things, but that's something that I think we'll, we'll talk about here in just a, in a little bit more detail here as soon as we're done with our comments. But I'll turn it over to Mike for any other, just traffic related concerns or just engineering concerns in general that he might have on this.
Okay, thank you, Douglas. Let me get to my maps. So this will include this large parcel here, half of this other large parcel, and this small section here. It will have a connection to Madison Cove and, what is this, County? Manor Farms, Manor Farms is a small subdivision here, so it'll provide a well-needed second access to both of these developments, and then it will have a, a development access onto Central Valley as well. So we had them look at all the, the connection points, and then also Central Valley and Leanna, and it did come back that they do need turn lanes on that, and I will try to get to it. Okay, so this is Leanna Central Valley coming down here, this is the Dollar General, if you know where I'm talking about, and this is Leanna Road here. So they will have to acquire right away to do a dedicated right turn, southbound right, and then this, this will become a dedicated left this way, and then you also will have a eastbound left into Leanna Central Valley. And they, this is part of their development plan, they understand that they will have to do this. But at the other points, let me get back to the maps, nothing was required at, at the other existing subdivision or their new subdivision route. It was only this intersection here, I guess because of the proximity to 840 and this, it did need a, a turn lane improvements here. Happy to try to answer any questions if you have any for me.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mike, can you talk to me about Quickthorn Lane that is listed on there with each of those long straightaways?
Oh, yes, let me get back to the plan.
I saw the little diagram, but if you could educate me a little bit more on those?
So that was one of our comments. You can see they have these long straightaways. This is the connection to Madison Cove here, and then Manor Farms connection is here. So they, we asked them, what do you propose for traffic calming? And that's what they proposed with, I think, this median island here. I'm not 100% certain, we had tried this with that development on Twin Oak Drive, and we felt that it wasn't sufficient enough to slow traffic down. They are showing stop bars at these three locations, but...
So do, people are required to come to a stop at those?
Well, you typically don't use, the manual of Uniform Traffic Control Devices states that you're not supposed to use stop conditions as traffic calming. You're supposed to do something like, let's see, like we saw on Tottington with the traffic circles.
Right, so why do they have stop bars?
That, they wanted to present that to you.
Okay, I don't like. And then is the little, can you go back to that picture?
This thing...
And that, that is a, a raised curb?
Yes.
Has, has our highway superintendent looked at this? He's going to have to repave that one day, can his equipment get through there?
I would say so, there's 11-foot lanes here. It only provides a little bit of a chicane at this median.
It's very small, yeah.
Yeah, so...
What with, what is, what is, oh, I don't see the, and the, the, the three, oh, sorry, Whisperwood Drive and Quickthorn Lane, how long are those? What, what's the length of those stretches?
Oh goodness, they are pretty long. Let's see, let me get back to this one. That is about 3,400 feet, so it's six cents of a mile, something like that.
That, we're, yeah, I would have that question for the developer, Mr. Chairman, as to see what we can do better there.
Did, hey, Mike, did I understand correctly that their recommendation was just the, the median?
At one location, I'm not 100% sure where they're proposing that, let's see.
And, and quite frankly, I mean, the developer can probably, I mean, this may be something that he wanted to look at, at multiple intersections. I had asked him when we first talked about this, just to say, give us some kind of a diagram that we can have up here so you guys can...
As they talk through, okay, and that's what I thought you said, that they needed to go through a presentation of it, which is fine, but I also just had a quick, just point of clarity. You did say that the traffic study did recommend turning lanes, because that's a first in the last, like, 10 developments we've heard.
Right, they're at the intersection of Leanna and Leanna Central Valley.
Okay.
An existing, right. The other, the other intersections did not warrant that.
Okay.
And I should point out that they are proposing tree plantings in this island. I know the highway department would require that the HOA take care of those if you so So that's, that's kind of what, and they're, you know, they're trying to maximize the, the development potential, preserving soils. Part of this is their step system over here, and I think another, this area over here maybe, but they're trying to maximize, you know, the development. So that's, but it, you know, lends itself to these long straightaways, which we're a little uncomfortable with. We're asking, what can we do to help slow down traffic in these, this subdivision?
Other questions, comments? Would you like to speak with the developer? Step right up, gentlemen.
We get two for the price of one, but Trey is back up here, I'm Jeff Hines with Catalyst Design Group, so we're the engineering, planning, landscape architectural firm.
And again, I'm Trey Woodruff from Century Communities.
Same questions as before?
Yes, sir.
Tell us about your plans.
All right, yes, sir. So this, much like the last one that we looked at, is 15,000 square foot minimums, and anywhere we can, we are expanding those lots to get larger than 15,000 square feet. This particular site kind of begs for a little bit larger square footage houses, and so we're going to start at around 25,000, or, sorry, not 25,000, 2,500 square feet. We'll go up to closer to 3,500 square feet on the houses. Again, three car garages is the, is what we're looking to do, a mixture of board and batten, brick, stone, much of what you see in, in our accepted neighborhoods here.
Trey, I was going to compliment you, the last time you were up on putting those roundabouts in the last plan, why did you not put it in this one, and can we add something better than what you, what we see here?
Sure, one of the things that we've definitely learned through this process is that there are no standards or specs for traffic calming, and it's something that we've definitely been working with the team about and would strive to have you guys help create some sort of standard for what is traffic calming. So it leaves itself open to a lot of different interpretations, and we've been through a few different rounds to try to figure out what would be best. If the roundabouts are good, and that's what the body wants, we could certainly implement them here, but we tried to show some different varieties of options to try to get that feedback today, which were, which is the right way to go.
And I was going to add to your question, the, because we are connecting to the other two, to Manor Farm and to Madison Cove, but the traffic for those two developments realistically would not be a cut through to us, because it would come out to Leanna Central Valley. So we don't see pass-through traffic. Roundabouts can be a good solution, you know, when you get to the neighborhood scale, generally they're smaller, it's not like some of the ones we've driven around on more main arteries or collector streets. Trucks do run over them on moving van, you know, they're designed that way. So with this one, because we had the stop intersection, we went with a, a raised median with landscaping in it, going for attractiveness as well as that, and then using the three-way stop. So I know that the MU TCD basically encourages not using a three-way stop as traffic calming, but a lot of cities and neighborhoods do implement those as a way to slow traffic through the neighborhood. So if, if you would like us to have a roundabout there, we can do that. The longer runs, one more point, the longer runs are oriented with the slope. There is a good slope to this site from what would be Plan East toward Plan West, as well as the ridge line to the south. And so you're really not going to have any connectivity to the south over that top of that ridge line, but we are aligning the streets with the topography so that the homes can, can basically, their driveways would go down and enter, and the rear yard can fall away and have a deck to take up that slope. So trying not to go 90 degrees to what the contours are telling us.
And I, I just realized, I've totally misread these plans. Where, where are the, the, the traffic calming that you all had? Can you point those out to me on?
Yeah, the, the road name, it would be at the corner of Berry Bush Lane and then the main drive, which is Hallberry Lane. So it would be right...
Just at that three-way stop, okay.
At that one, which is where most of your traffic comes together at one point.
Mike, the Whisperwood, Quick, Quickthorn, and the last one, Hedge, Hedge Gate, those are within our, those are okay? Those three, are they too far, too long?
Yeah, I think they're, they're...
I can't remember what our maximum...
It's 1600, but I believe that those all fall.
What are you talking about, for traffic calming or, or block lane?
For traffic calming.
Traffic calming, yeah, they're...
We, we have a limit for straightaways, I don't remember what that limit was.
Yeah, let's see if I can...
Is it eight?
See how much these are. They are about 1,000 feet long, so...
Too long, too long.
It is, it is pretty...
Over...
But he, he is correct, let's see, there is some topography that he has to deal with on this end of the development. So this is what he's talking about. Let me turn on, oops, sorry, wrong way.
It's on our overall drainage plan, you can also see it there.
Yeah, this is Madison Cove, and then those straightaway lengths are right here...
Right.
In this area. So he does have some, some grade to, to work with.
There are no sidewalks in this plan, correct?
There are sidewalks in this, that's, that's part of...
If I could just maybe try to wrap this up, you guys are willing to work with our staff to do anything that you can come together with to slow the traffic down?
Absolutely.
Don't say anyone else, I think you've covered it, gentlemen, thank you. Any other discussion or a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'm, I, it's really not my intention to make this meeting super long, but I wonder if we may suspend, I'd like to suspend the rules, I have a question for our highway superintendent about this, if I could. That, that's my motion, to suspend the rules for Mr. Brooks to come back up.
Asking to suspend the rules, come back up.
I'll second.
You got a second? All in favor, say aye. Keeping you busy tonight, Mr.
Before we move on...
Keeping you busy tonight, Mr.?
Before we move on, I'd like to point out that my feelings are a little hurt that you had to really think about whether or not you were going to let me come back up here. No, Mr. Chairman?
Uh, thank you, you've heard the discussions, I want to get your thoughts on the traffic calming and, and your, do you have, do you share the same concerns that I do about these long straightaways?
Uh, absolutely, I, I do have concerns about long stra- stretches of, of, you know, subdivision streets without any interruption. I, I was, I was pretty excited about the, as you were, about the, I think it's Tottenham Farms, and the traffic circles that are being proposed in there. I think that's new to us, we don't have any of those, do we, Mike? I think those are a, a very good way to, to manage, you know, traffic calming without, without a severe disruption to property owners and that kind of thing. Chicanes that Mike talked about that are really what this Hawthorne is, is suggested by these divided road medians. I, I don't think those have the same effect, I, I think disrupting that path slightly like that, I, I really don't think that has the same effect. And, and I spoke with someone today on the development team, I'm not sure who it was, but I'm assuming it was up here a minute ago. But today's the first time that I've really seen this plan. But these divided medians, in my opinion, can cause some problems long-term for highway departments or street departments. There's going to be vegetation, there, in, in one of these, there's going to be vegetation that... Uh, this is Tennessee, so if there's going to be any vegetation that lasts longer than 12 months, it's going to have to be irrigated. Irrigation and, you know, just natural rainfall can infiltrate through that island and get under our streets and cause problems with settling and, and compaction and that kind of thing. So not a super big fan of those for that reason, as well as managing that vegetation to a, a height that is, you know, good for being able to see through and around and that kind of thing is sometimes difficult. Even the best intentions sometimes outlive themselves when you, when you plant a tree or a bush and it, you know, it's fine at first, but after it gets some age and maturity to it, you can't, you can no longer see, you know, I think it causes some sight distance problems. So I'm not a big fan of those. I, I'd much prefer the, the roundabouts or traffic circles over those. The other side of that same intersection, I believe, was stamped concrete or stamped pavement. That's something that I would not raise our hand up for maintaining, you know, it's, it's going to eventually need to be replaced or repaired, and that can be costly, for sure. I'm sure all these things take fire apparatus into consideration, but 11-foot lanes are pretty narrow. So there's that, you know, some of our fire apparatus is extremely, extremely long and big, we need to be able to get there in a hurry, so I prefer the, the roundabouts. And I do have concerns about water infiltration into these divided medians, so...
Thank you, sir. I got, I did have one question, Greg, have we got any that looks like that, that you know of in this county right now?
I do not know of any currently that exist like this. There are some entrances off of some larger state routes, larger city roads that have a divided entrance where there's a sign or something, or has been a sign.
It's much larger than that, though, I would say, here, guys, thank you, I'm glad to hear you say what you said, I'm... Back in session.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve with staff comments, especially including the opportunities to slow traffic down.
Okay, motion to approve.
I'll second.
And second, further discussion. Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Jeff Phillips?
Aye.
Mike Kush?
Aye.
Lee Bogle?
Yes.
Charlotte P. Trey Gooch?
Yes.
Jim Thompson?
No.
Michael Shirley?
Yes.
Jason Beavers?
Yes.
Amber Brown?
Yes.
Pettis Reed?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Motion does carry. We now move in to submit it for final plat approval. And yes, we're just on this side of the hill, so we're trying to move as quick as we can. Moving now into item one. Bailey Property Reapproval, previously approved on May 28th, 2024. It's number 242021, two lots on 4.16 acres, zoned RL, located along Reedable Street. Cameron Bailey is the applicant, includes a request for a fire hydrant waiver, Mr. Damasi.
Yes, sir, thank you, as you stated, the applicants are proposing to divide this property into two lots. This, as you stated just a moment ago, was originally approved by the Planning Commission back in May of last year. Final plat approvals are valid for 12 months. This has not been recorded yet, I spoke with the applicant a little earlier today, and the reason being is just things are just taking longer to get going as far as house plans and different things like that. So the applicant wasn't going to be able to be here tonight, they wanted to be, but unfortunately, he was just getting over an illness, and the rest of his family had it, so he was not really going to be in a position to, to be here. Nothing has changed with this, it's just the fact that it is over its 12-month timeframe, so they're just asking for a reapproval.
Staff's recommendation?
It's, we recommend approve it again.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion approved, a second. Any more discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, it has been approved. Item two, Richmond's Retreat, Section 5, reapproval, previously approved on November the 12th, 2024, 242082. 30 lots on 11.7 acres, zoned RM, previously approved PRD, located along Shovable Pike. KW Group LLC is the applicant, Mr. Damasi.
Yes, sir, thank you. This, as you stated, was originally approved back in November of 2024. Again, final plat approvals are valid for 12 months, just, just went outside of its approval window. The applicant was aware that they were still having a few issues that needed to be resolved before the final plat was approved and recorded. So again, nothing has really changed with this, we did look it over, we made a few suggestions for some tweaks for them to make, they have done that. Beyond that, this plan is in good order, we just recommend approval again for it.
Nothing that'll bite us, Doug?
Sorry?
Nothing that'll come up and bite us?
I don't think so.
Motion?
If I knew that, I wouldn't...
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve. And a second, further discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, it has been approved. Item three, Davenport Subdivision, Lot 3 through 5, 252068. It's the number three lots on 7.75 acres, zoned RM, located along Jake's Road. Joseph Davenport is the applicant, includes a waiver to lots of less than five acres along private easement, Mr. Damasi.
Yes, sir, thank you, just for clarity, this is not Davenport Station subdivision, this is, their last name is Davenport. This is property in a different area of the county, just to make sure everybody understands that. They are proposing to divide a portion of their property into three lots, Mike just pulled up the plan. You can see what they're doing is they're using the existing access off Jake's Avenue, having a couple of flag lots going back. However, there's not enough road frontage there for them to have, each one to have 50-foot of road furniture, so they are asking for a private easement to access those other lots. Those other lots in the back are less than five acres, so that is the reason that this is being brought to you tonight. Mike has kind of drawn, you can see on the, on the plan there, that there, when you look at the aerial photo, you can see that there's a little ditch that was kind of cut through there, it looks like it was accessing, there's a, a new build going on, on that larger property. And you can kind of see that it looks like it was being dug to access, a septic was being dug to access that soil site in the back. I reached out to the applicant's surveyor last week about that. He said that that has been abandoned, that they are not going to use that site for that build, that new build there, that they're just going to remain their septic area on their larger lot, and that the septic soil for that property, which you're showing there as one of the new lots, is going to be strictly for that. They're not asking for any kind of an off-site easement. The surveyor I spoke to said he did talk to the applicant, the applicant did confirm that they were not going to use that site for this. However, this, this is what the aerial shows, and that's what I told him, I actually sent him a screenshot of it, so, but that was their response to that. I'm not sure if anybody is here tonight representing this, yes, someone is here for that. Hey, I see him in the back, sorry, Chris didn't see you there, but with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Doug, you said they didn't have enough road frontage, they're, they're going to share a driveway to Jake's Avenue?
Correct, though, all those will, I mean, there'll be separate drives, you know, to the lots, but they'll all come out at that same location there on Jake's, correct?
Separate dri- I'm just, easements, do they have easements in writing and everything?
Well, it'll be shown on the plat as, as an easement, a shared easement, and that'll have to be, I mean, typically the deeds will reference the plat, and the plat is showing that.
Any other questions?
Doug, I'm not, excuse me, Mr. Chairman, Doug, I'm not, I don't remember seeing anything like this, where you squeeze some flag lots down to where you have one entry point, have we ever done that before?
There are other instances in the county, now, like I said, this is a little bit unique, because the right-of-way for Jake's Avenue kind of ends right there where this property is. We have seen some other examples of similar situations where everybody's, there's one place that has access, and then everything kind of comes off that. Now, the ones that we have looked at have been over five acres. This is one of the things that they're looking at here, is the fact that they're not under five acres, these are under five acres, excuse me, these don't meet the five-acre minimum. So we've seen some similar developments of greater than five acres that share access, but we don't see as many like this.
Personally, I don't like it, but that doesn't mean it won't work, and, and that I will not approve it. Do you have a, does staff have any type of comment or recommendation on that?
Well, it's, I, I would agree, it's certainly not ideal, but, you know, with the waivers, like you said, it could work. I mean, it's, it's two extra lots, and they may not be five acres, together they are, one's two, one's three. I would definitely advise against ever trying to divide these any further than that, because I don't think we'd be in support, we really wouldn't be in support of that. But I agree, this is not an ideal situation.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. Mr. Sanders, do you have any thoughts on this, or from Fire Service, getting down there and servicing these lots?
I'll just say what's been echoed, it's not ideal, you know, obviously, this is a small, you know, small subdivision, three lots. Generally, we don't have any regulation that addresses developments of that size. You know, I always refer to, if you want to build your house on top of a mountain on a goat path, no hydrants, that's, that's your prerogative, it's America, so... At the end of the day, it's not ideal, I, I think, I do like that they've proposed a hydrant on this, so that's, we're better off there than we would be otherwise.
Doug, is there, is there any alternative to this? Is there?
Well, I mean, it's not an alternative they would like, I wouldn't think, but, I mean, if they were to cul-de-sac Jake's Avenue, I mean, that would eliminate the need for any kind of, of a, you know, private easement or anything like that, if they were to put a cul-de-sac there. But that's not a cheap option by any means.
Or possibly a three-point turn.
Like a hammerhead or something like that, yeah. We have seen that in some other situations.
And the, the main, the main benefit to that is that if the wrong vehicle finds themselves down there, they can turn around without damaging property, getting stuck. Our fire apparatus can get down there, same thing, they can turn their equipment around without getting stuck.
Correct.
If, what would, what would need to be worded so that there is an adequate turnaround space? How would I need to word, I, I don't, I'm, like, Mr. Sanders just said, if they want to build their house down there, that's fine, but I have to think about our, our equipment, and, and also just wrong-way drivers. How can I word the motion so that this can be approved, but it is going to include adequate turnaround space? I don't necessarily mean that they have to build a, a cul-de-sac, but we need something.
Well, if you're not requiring something that's going to be built to county specifications, I was going to say, if that's what you're really looking for, then this will probably be deferred. Because if you're looking for something where they're going to be dedicating right-of-way and developing within a, a new, a new right-of-way, then that would be something that we would have to look at a preliminary plan for, that would have to come back through the Planning Commission. Now, if you're just looking for us to work with the applicant to design, or have them design some sort of a turnaround area that would be acceptable to us, we would bring, you know, our fire marshal, Josh Sanders, we'd be in the mix to make sure that he was okay with what was being proposed. If that's what you're looking for, something on, on that line, more of a private-type situation, I think you could just approve it, subject to what you just said, and let us work with the applicant on that, and with their design engineer.
Mr. Chairman, I will move to approve, subject to the applicant's meeting with planning and the Fire Department, Fire Marshal, to make sure that we have an adequate turnaround space at the end of Jake's Avenue.
Heard the motion, do you have a second?
Second.
Have a second, further discussion.
Mr. Chair, I have a question, is this a family, doing this for family members, or is this a resale?
I don't know for sure, I, I don't remember that conversation ever happening. Usually, if that's the case, they'll make that clear at the beginning. In my mind, it doesn't really matter, one way or the other, I know we tend, we tend to look at things a little bit differently for family. In my mind, it's going to be an issue, because someday, this is going to be owned by people who aren't related, so long-term, it doesn't really matter to me. But I, I don't, we didn't really have that conversation.
Madam Secretary, call the roll.
Jeff Phillips?
Yes.
Mike Kush?
Yes.
Lee Bogle?
Yes.
Charlotte P.
Yes.
Trey Gooch?
Yes.
Jim Thompson?
Yes.
Michael Shirley?
Yes.
Jason Beavers?
Yes.
Amber Brown?
Yes.
Pettis Reed?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Motion does carry. Item four, Pine Valley Farms, Section 1, 252082, 38 lots on 21.81 acres, zoned PUD, located along East Compton Road. MHW Investment Partners LLC is the applicant, Mr. Damasi.
Yes, sir, thank you, the preliminary plan for this development was approved by the Planning Commission back in August of 2022. This plat does appear to be consistent with that approval. I will note, there was one change made, when this development first came through, there were two access points that we'll look, look at on the plan here, Mike's bringing it up right now. You can see that Black Creek and Cong, was it Congree, Congree? Congree, I think is how it says, were both going to be access points directly on to East Compton. Turn lanes are part of the approval for this development, this was a planned development, this was not a, a conventional RM subdivision, so when they came through, turn lanes were made a condition of approval as part of the rezoning. They were running into some of the issues, I think it was getting the proper right-of-way they needed for that second access point to the south. So what we have done, so as to not to lose the ability to have it as an access, that has been turned into a, basically, an emergency access only, a fire access, and will be handled and maintained as common space. However, will be designed such a way that it could handle emergency vehicle traffic in and out, so it'll be a gated access. So that is something I did want to point out, that was different from the preliminary plan approval. Most of our comments on this have been addressed, this has been something I know that there's been a lot of discussion on with the development team, along with staff. But with that, I'll turn to Mike if he has any other comments, but from our standpoint, I think most of our comments have been addressed.
And I didn't have anything to add, he's pretty much covered it, they've addressed our comments.
Masters?
Move to approve with all staff comments.
Motion made.
Second.
And second, all those in favor, say aye. Those opposed? It is approved. Item five, Jake's Avenue Boundary Subdivision, two lots on 2.990 acres, zoned RM, located along Jake's Avenue. Camel Corporation is the applicant, includes a waiver for a lot of less than five acres off of private easement.
Yes, sir, thank you, this property was actually once two lots. Yes, sir, thank you. This property was actually once two lots, but was combined by plat back in 2018. The current owner wants to divide it back into two lots. Lot two is going to contain an existing house, and will have access onto Magnolia Valley Court. Originally, when this was done, it was combined back in 2018, the applicant, or the owner at the time, actually, over there, a little further to the east, off of the, off the road, that was, that drive was not really there. There was, the, the owner of that property actually had like a landscape landscaping-type pond and everything right there, so they didn't actually have access onto Magnolia Grove Court. So, what this plat is proposing is Lot Two will have that access onto the right-of-way. So, in that regard, it's fine. The remaining lot, again, being less than five acres, still is already relying on the easement, but since they were creating the new lot, that's why we needed to bring it through here today. Our comments have been addressed. This plat appears to be in good order. It's just a matter of this easement is necessary for the other lot that's being created.
Move with approve with staff comments. Motion to approve.
Second.
And a second for discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, it has been approved. Item six, Northside Estates, Section 3252086, 22 lots on 9.11 acres, Zone RM, located along Jerrylway, RHB LLC is the applicant. Mr. Demossi?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. The preliminary plan for this development was approved by the Planning Commission back in 2015. Again, this does appear to be consistent with that plan approval. Our comments have been addressed. Something that I will mention, there are just a couple of outstanding items. One of them just being, and this is really a standard comment, is to show the fire hydrant locations. The design engineer for the developments already assured me that they will be shown prior to them bringing this in for recording. We'll make sure that that is the case as well. But beyond that, this, this plan appears to be in good order.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
Have a second for the discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, it is approved. Item seven, Ashmore Subdivision, Section 1252087, 42 lots on 37.14 acres, Zone RM, located along Franklin Road, SR 968651, Franklin Road, Tennessee is the development. LLC is the applicant. Mr. Demossi?
Yes, sir, thank you. The preliminary plan for this development was approved by the Planning Commission back in September of 2023. Again, this final plat does appear to be consistent with that preliminary plan approval. Most of our comments have been addressed. You can see that there are a number that are actually still on the plan. Most, there's still several that do need, now, these are what I would, at least from my standpoint, planning and engineer, planning and zoning standpoint. There's a couple little tweaks that they need to make as far as adding a couple of lots to certain notes and things like that, just to make sure that everyone understands that certain lots only had to have access onto the internal roads, not to the Franklin Road, which is a state road. There are a few outstanding engineering items. I'll let Mike discuss those a little more detail.
Thank you. One of the items that we had, the, this corner lot 60, the clearance, that it's a TDOT requirement, that the driveway has to be 150 feet from the intersecting street, so we'll have to get clarification from TDOT if this is acceptable, or they need to move this lot to another location. That's one big thing that we need to clarify with TDOT. Let's see. Other than that, I think they have addressed most of our comments. We had questions about sign easements and other things like that, but all in all, I believe they are mostly addressed. Just some of the, like Doug said, these open comments were from our public works engineer who was away with a new baby, so he hasn't cleared these yet. So, but other than that, I believe they are addressed, mostly addressed.
Doug, if a motion to approve with staff comments would cover all of those items that have yet been addressed?
Yes.
Would it cover that?
It would.
That's my motion, move to approve with staff comments.
Second.
Have the motion and a second for the discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, it has been approved. Moving now over to Section C, submitted for site plan approval. Item one, St. John, the beloved Copic Orthodox Church, 253028, new construction of proposed gym and storage area, 4,130 square feet, and storage building, 1,295 square feet, on eight acres, Zone RM, located along Baker Road, St. John, the beloved Copic Orthodox Church is the applicant. Mr. Demossi?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. A site plan for this property was approved by the Planning Commission back in October of 2023. This site plan that you're seeing today is for an addition to the existing house on the property, for a gym and storage area. There's also a second building that they're showing on the property, which will be used for storage. Most of our comments from, at least a planning and engineering standpoint, have been addressed. There are a few outstanding items that our Fire Marshal still has on this. I'll let him kind of elaborate on that just a little bit more, if he, if he would just take a moment to do that. But obviously, before we would issue any permits or anything like that, those would have to be addressed, but I'll let Josh discuss those.
Thank you, Doug. So, yeah, where this new proposed gym and storage area is, we have, you can see the access runs in front of the existing house. However, the code does require a 150-foot distance from the edge of the fire apparatus access to all exterior points of the building. So, as you see on the note there, we do have an issue on this back section near the property line, where we don't have any access. So, I'm going to, we'll have to work with them to see what we can get looked at, if we need to put some geopurview pavers or something like this on this between, behind the existing church, or something, to, to improve that access just a little. It doesn't have to go all the way to it, just got to be within 150 feet, to, to make sure we have access to all, all points of the exterior of the building.
Masters?
Doug, has, has the people from the church been made aware of this, these access issues?
Well, we've discussed those with the applicant's design engineer. Now, have I had any specific conversations with the applicant, with the church specifically about that, I have not, but we have referred, these comments went to the design engineer, so they are aware of them.
But the indication is that, that they're willing to make those adjustments?
Well, they'll have to before they get a permit, whether they want to or not.
Let me reword that. Do they appear to be cooperative?
Yes, sir, they do.
So, your recommendation, once again, is to approve with those comments?
Correct.
It's my motion to approve with staff comments.
Motion to approve.
Second.
And a second for discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, it has been approved. Item two, Riverside Wedding Retreat, addition 253030, new construction of a 3,050-square-foot ceremony chapel, a property of seven acres, Zone PUD, located at 1218 West Jefferson Pike. Joseph and Chrissens at Macca are the applicants. Mr. Demossi?
Yes, sir, thank you. Excuse me. The PUD for Macavilla or Riverside Wedding Retreat was originally approved by the Board of Commissioners back in November of 2022. Planning Commission will recall that we just saw a PUD amendment for this just within the last few months. So, what they are proposing to do is to add a second building or ceremony chapel on the property for wedding ceremonies, which allows for indoor weddings should weather become an issue. Also helps with logistical issues, in order to have a separate area for the, for the ceremony, but then have a, use the existing area for reception, so they're not having to convert on the fly, so to speak. We have reviewed this plan. We did send our comments to our, to the design engineer. Pretty much all the comments we have, have been addressed. I think there is an outstanding Highway Department comment again. We'll make sure that it gets addressed. I don't think he just had a chance to, to take a look at the, the comment since he was out. But most of our comments here have been addressed.
What was the comment from Highway Department?
Mike, can you zoom in on his, the, the comment on here just says plus or minus any range. I'm not sure what exactly he was talking about. Ow. Looks like it's a note about maybe one of the construction notes or something.
Concrete.
Yeah. I mean, again, that's something that we'll, we'll make sure gets, gets addressed.
Yeah, it was essentially just a question.
I just, I wanted to make sure it wasn't about road access, so, because that's what my problem was the last time we talked about it, so.
Correct.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve with all staff comments.
Motion to approve.
Second.
And a second for the discussion. All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed, it has been approved. Item three, Mueller, 253015, construction of a 27-by-700-square-foot office warehouse on 7.25 acres, Zone LI, located along Shores Road, Mueller Incorporated is the applicant.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. This property was rezoned to light industrial at the County Commission's meeting back in June of 2024. The applicant is proposing to construct about a 28,000-square-foot warehouse and office facility for steel building sales. Traffic improvements were identified for this project, some shoulder improvements to Shores Road near the site, and also some improvements to the intersection at Shores Road and Almaville Road. I spoke with our assistant engineer for construction a little earlier today about that. He said that they are working with TDOT about those improvements that would need to be made at the intersection. Looks like Mike's got the concept layout right there, what that's going to look like. With that, we feel that this plan is in good order, and we'd recommend approval, subject to the staff comments, one of them being this, these road improvements that need to be made for this development.
Yes, and Doug is correct. They, just a quick follow-up, they are proposing to do a southbound, or southwestbound left turn lane into Shores Road. This is Shores here, this is Almaville Road. This will, this is State Route 102, so it'll have to get approved through the state. And these are Jared's comments here.
Yours, Coach.
Thank you. Mike, the property that was across Almaville Road from this one, weren't, wasn't TDOT wanting the tie-in to be further, or closer towards 96?
Right.
So, they don't want to have them across from each other with a light signalization?
Well, the, this is the Mueller property here, these two parcels that are, were, I guess, combined together. This is the property, I believe this is the property you're talking about.
Right, yes, sir.
They didn't want a driveway access right here, but TDOT is okay with a, I guess, a southbound left onto Shores.
I move to approve with all staff comments.
Second.
And a second for discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, it has been approved. We're now into Section D, rezoning, zoning ordinance amendment request. We're going to take about 10 minutes, and we'll be back here at 8:10. We're adjourned till then.
Okay.
I'm ready to call back into session. I'm sitting up here with a draft coming from Puckett's, and I smell their barbecue cooking, so I wish I hadn't had supper tonight. Some of you, I missed Jim Abelwater, not here this evening, but Jim has decided to retire from the commission, and is stepping down, and this was his last commission meeting, so he's not here this evening. So, just to let you know, I was trying to think, I think it, what, 15 years? Pretty much that, 15 years he'd been a member of the, of the Planning Commission. So, he's served us well, and we wish him the best, and, but he, he has decided to, to retire from us. We'll step now into Section D, rezoning, zoning ordinance amendment request. All rezoning regulation amendment requests will be considered at the January 15, 2026 Board of Commissioners meeting unless deferred or withdrawn by the Planning Commission or applicant. Now, starting with item one, Jeffrey D. Turner, REZ 25029, location 5905 Franklin Road. The commissioner district is 19. Romell McMurray, size of site is approximately .7 acres. Tax map, 100B, Group B, parcel 14. Existing zoning is resident medium density. Proposed zoning is office professional. Mr. Demossi?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. And commission members, you'll forgive me, I just realized that I've got these rezoning applications in the wrong order. So, Mr. Turner's is listed first on your agenda, but it's actually the second one of your rezoning, so I apologize about it. I'll fix that prior to County Commission, so bear with me just a second. Okay. The applicant proposes to rezone this property from its present RM to office professional. You can see the zoning map that Mike has on the screen right now. You can see that there are two office professionally-zoned properties immediately adjacent to this property, also owned by the applicant. He would like to make renovations to the existing house on the subject property, make it more functional for a professional office. Again, he's done the same thing at the two adjacent lots, which are 5845 and 5871 Franklin Road, which were rezoned OP in 2022 and 2024 respectively. He's also rezoned some other properties further to the east along Franklin Road, which he also uses as business offices. And there's a letter that I'll refer you to in your agenda packets from the applicant. He has submitted a concept plan. We have talked with the applicant, as well as TDOT, about some of the changes that he would like to make between 5905 and 5871, making it kind of like a combined parking lot area, one access point. So, there have been some, already some discussions regarding that. I think there's been some discussions to somehow getting all three of them together at the same time.
Yes, TDOT is going to require that he combine all three driveways into one, so these two gravel driveways will go away, and then they'll have to use this concrete one he has in the middle.
Thank you. The concept plan does show the share access between, at least the two, the one immediately adjacent to it. The plan also shows a parking lot that will consist of about 10 regular parking space. Of course, they would have to submit an engineered site plan. The applicant's aware of this. He's gone through this process several times. Office professional properties, if they're adjacent to residentially-zoned properties, are required to have a type-one buffer, since the area, or I'm sorry, the property to the east is already zoned OP. He wouldn't have to do any buffer on the eastern side, but he would require one on the west and on the south, as Mike is outlining on the map before you. Our performance standards would also apply to this. As I stated earlier, the applicant does own several properties along Franklin Road, and has done something similar for the other properties, which are now business offices. We do feel that the existing non-residential properties in this area, along with Franklin Road, being classified as a principal arterial by TDOT, also being within the county suburban character area, makes this a reasonable request, and we would recommend approval. The applicant is present, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Masters, any questions for staff? If not, we'll ask that the applicant or his representative come forward this time. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, Planning Commission members. My name is Jeff Turner. I own the property at 5905 Franklin Road, and I live on Coleman Hill Road.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. Are, are these all on individual septic?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I believe that covered it.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, thank you.
At this time, we'll, we'll open for public comment, and anyone who has any kind of comment, and will make either for or against, will come forward this time. You'll have exactly three minutes. You'll notice that there is a timer on the podium there. You'll have your three minutes. It's got three lights. They're green, yellow, and red, just like at the traffic light you'll have out here. Green to go, yellow to slow down, red to stop. And we'll ask that whoever would like to speak first, come forward this time. Not seeing anyone, we'll close the comment period. Commissioners?
I'll move for approval, subject to staff comments, if there's no other discussion.
We have a motion and a second. For the discussion?
Doug, this subdivision, is it, is it on an HOA type of a deal?
You know, Mr. Phillips, I don't know for sure. This is an older subdivision. Mike's looking at one of the Platts right now, from back in the mid 80s. I don't know for sure if it is or not. Now, I will say, with a couple of lots that he has developed, none of that has come up as any discussion points that we've had, so that's something he would have to deal with.
I'm, I'm just wondering, if it, if they, if it were an HOA, would that, would this violate HOA bylaws or?
Well, it depends on what the bylaws say.
I, I understand that, but I'm just wondering if that should be a consideration sometime in the future, if we should make sure that, that they're meeting those standards.
Well, and I will say this, whenever we talk with applicants about rezonings, a lot of the times that does come up, and we'll tell them, look, we can't enforce these if somebody wants to come in, and that's not just for rezonings, that's for somebody who wants to pull a building permit on some, on something, like if they want to put out a, like a storage shed on their property. There are some HOAs that don't allow that. We'll still issue a permit because we can't take that into consideration, but we tell them, look, if you have an HOA or some restricted covenants in your deed, this could become a problem for you, and at that point, that's their decision to make as to whether or not they want to move forward with it.
Thank you.
Madam Secretary, please call the room.
Yes.
Mike Kush?
Yes.
Lee Vogel?
Yes.
Charlotte P.?
Yes.
Trey Gooch?
Yes.
Jim Thompson?
Yes.
Michael Shirley?
Yes.
Jason Beavers?
Yes.
Amber Brown? Pettis Reed?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Motion does carry. Moving now into item two, Jeffrey D. Turner, REZ 25030, location is 11642 Franklin Road, commissioner district nine, Joshua James, size of size, approximately 11.3 acres. Tax maps 95, parcel 25. Existing zoning is residential medium density. Proposed zoning is light industrial. Mr. DeMossi?
Yes, sir, thank you. Staff became aware of a potential unapproved business on this property. The owner, property owner, also the applicant, became aware of the situation and has cleaned up the property. What you're going to see on this aerial photo is earlier this year, this was before the cleanup and everything happened, but when we met with the applicant regarding this, he was aware of what was going on and took steps to take care of that, so it doesn't look like, doesn't look like this today. We did meet with the applicant subsequently to discuss some potential uses for the property. The applicant has included a letter with his application, which I did attach with the staff report. Says he wants to zone the property light industrial to develop a self-storage facility, which would also include RV and boat parking areas. He feels that this development would provide a secure and convenient storage option for the area, and also referenced other similarly zoned property and uses in this area. This use of many warehouses is allowed by right in the light industrial zone. If this were a commercial zone, it would be allowed by special exception, which would mean he would have to go to the Board of Zoning Appeals. You see that there is a concept plan in your agenda packets. Mike actually has it up on the screen. You can kind of see what it is that he's looking at as a possibility for developing the property. You can see that he's got an access point along Franklin Road, as well as a potential back access onto Alma Ville Road as well. Obviously, this is conceptual, there would have to be tweaks to this plan. Lot coverage would be an issue with light industrial, only has allows for 50% lot coverage, this probably exceeds that, but again, this is just conceptual for your information. As I stated, both, two access points for this particular property, it does have frontage along Alma Ville Road and Franklin Road. Those are both state roads, so TDOT would have to be involved with any improvements, new access points to this particular property. Also, an engineered site plan would need to be submitted to our office for our review, typical that we would see with any kind of a site plan. Industrially zoned properties are required to provide a type three buffer adjacent to residentially zoned properties. Again, we would see that on an engineered site plan. Of course, you can see that he does have a fairly significant tree buffer in this area. Existing plantings can be used for that, that's something we would definitely encourage anyway, just to make sure that, you know, no sense in tearing the trees down just to replant them, so we would definitely work with the applicant on that. And our performance standards would also apply. As I stated a little earlier, there are several other light industrially zoned properties in this area, both along Franklin Road and Alma Ville Road. Mike just turned on the zoning layer, that little purplish colors. You can see that there are other light industrially zoned properties in the area. Franklin Road and Alma Ville Road are classified as principal arterials, or principal arterial and a minor arterial respectively, and are also identified in the AN Activity Center shown on Plan Rutherford. So we do feel that this is a reasonable request, and we would recommend approval. The applicant, again, is present, and will be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Commissioners?
Doug, I, I understand that probably, I assume, that the request to go from residential medium density to light industrial is so that this warehouse can be, or, or storage facility can be allowed by right. Could the applicant go from residential medium density to a PUD to accomplish the same thing?
Well, he could. It'd be a little bit more work on the front end for him, but that is a possibility, yes.
Sure, okay. I, I just wanted to be clear, you know, we, we approved a similar rezoning request at this, in this commission, that was reversed by the planning commission, and, and when I watched and went back and listened to their talk, their request for this area was to go with PUDs to lock it in, because this is touching and, and, and it does, it does have light industrial nearby, but it's also surrounded by residential. So did, did the discussion of a PUD come up with applicant? I'm going to talk to the applicant about this, but I just wanted to know what.
I, I don't think we had a lot of discussion. It's been a good couple of months since, since we discussed it.
Thank you.
But I think he wanted to try to move forward with the light industrial, just because of the fact that, like, we talked earlier, that there's some right across the street, right down the road. I think that was a lot of the reasoning for his request.
I want to set him up for success, and, you know, if it came at the PUD, I'd be all for it, and it would probably have a better chance of passing the county commission, I think, based on the last discussion for the property that's four, you know, just north of it.
Anyone else? We'll ask that the applicant come forward this time.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
My name's Jeff Turner again. I own the property at 11642 Franklin Road, and questions I can answer?
I think you heard, heard my concerns. Would you consider coming back with this as a PUD with, with this plan?
I'll be honest with you, I'm not that expert in any, in that discussion. When I met with Huddleston and, and reviewed all the regulations, this seemed like a natural fit, and because the, the other surrounding areas, the up and down through there, and I believe that since we submitted this, some other properties have been listed and are hoping to be commercial too, we just thought it was a natural fit. I'll be honest with you, I'm not familiar with that. I'm, I'm not a major developer. I, I'm just a, a bit of a hobbyist, if you will, and this is my, I live here, I live nearby, and it's just something I'm passionate about.
My concern with a rezoning, we had a similar rezoning out on John Bragg Highway, and I voted no against it. I would vote no against this one as well, because we're changing the zoning, so you may want to put in storage, but if you ever sell it, then the next person could by right bulldoze all the storage units and build anything that's related or allowed in the light industrial. The thing about yours, which is different than the one on John Bragg, is that it has a septic as well, so someone could put a structure that has an office and, and kind of change things up a little bit, so I would encourage, and I would also encourage you to go back and watch, I don't remember what month it was, but the, the commission reversed ours, because we voted to rezone the one north of you, and they specifically requested the PUDs, which locks it in, like, this is what we're going to build on this property, and that's it, so.
Understood, yes, sir.
Any other questions for the applicant?
Have you talked with neighbors, you, you received any?
Yes, sir, I have talked to everyone adjacent to me and have favorable support, 100% support. I had a discussion with a gentleman that's a couple of doors down, I think may have been involved in that other meeting, once he understood, I don't, I'm not sure if he's here, I don't think he is, but I, I did get, he, he expressed his concerns about that other property and the commercial trucks and stuff, and he said, you're up here, I'm okay with that. That was the last conversation I had with Mr. Douglas Carnegie, I believe.
How about Commissioner James?
Sir?
Have you talked to Commissioner James, Joshua James?
Yes, yes, sir. Yes, he signed off on it.
Very good, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Anyone else? Sir, we're not in public comment just yet. Okay.
Would you?
Thank you, sir.
Would you, I'm sorry.
Oh, yes.
Would you consider coming back with it as a PUD?
I, I would need to explore that, if that's something I need to do, I guess I'd have to defer this and then, and explore that and get better educated.
Okay.
Is that fair?
It's, it's fine with me, I mean, I would encourage it, if, if you're not in any rush, if you deferred it, then you could discuss and come back with, and if you decided not to, and tell me, like, hey, this is not what I'm going to do, I, I just, I, I think it would have a better, it's my opinion that it would have a better chance of getting through this commission and the county commission if it was a PUD, because a PUD, like I said, it locks it in, like, this is what I'm going to build on this property, and, and if I sell it, it still has to stay this, with this, with this plan.
Yes, sir. I, I'm, I, I kind of like this, it is what I'm going to do, if we need to put that in the notes, and I see what's the other, up and down the road, and kind of what's happening around there, I think it would be fair and reasonable to, to ask for this. Yes, sir. Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Turner.
Yes.
I just have a question for staff. This came before you as a code enforcement regulation, right?
Right, there was an unapproved business on the property, but after the, after speaking to the owner, the applicant, about it, I don't think he realized the scope of what was going on there, and when he figured out what was going on, he, he took steps to take care of the issue, yes. Again, it, what you're seeing here is from earlier in the year, it doesn't, it doesn't look like that now.
All right, we'll now go into public comment, and those who have anything either for or against, just as I've said before, will allow to come forward this time and express their opinion. You'll have exactly three minutes, so those who would like to come forward this time may do so. We need your name and address.
Hi, staff commissioners, Doug. I'm at 12, my name is Douglas Kerrigan, my wife Natalia Kerrigan, and we're at 12,000 Franklin Road. We have approximately 57 acres there, in the process of having a residential and maybe secondary residential. So basically, what we keep seeing is this industrial plans coming around all these homes, and right across the street, in the last two years, they just built 1.3 million dollar homes, straight across the street from this, perhaps, storage. Some, a couple of concerns I have, one is, has there ever been a study done, the rainwater that this concrete is going to create going into Stewart Creek, which is close to my residence, is going to flood me more? So there's been a study, not, the other thing is DOT is talking about coming in, taking 180 to 200 feet of property, not onto existing land, but going below the existing highway 96, which is going to go onto this property. My question is, how far setback is this, these buildings going to be? Because if this is the case, all this industrial stuff they've already approved, that these homes, and it's been converted to business, those are all going to be bulldozed, because that's going to be fall within 180 feet, what the DOT has already got in their drawing to plan, to come through there with that road. So, and I keep seeing this industrial keep trying to come in our neighborhoods and squeezing us in our neighborhoods. We moved out there in the county to get peace, to get away from the lights and the noise pollution, now we're going to bring the industrial into our neighborhood, and there's a lot of other homes around there that, that probably hadn't been notified, and Mr. Turner and I did have a conversation, because Mr. Doug had asked him maybe to come over to speak to me, and we did have a conversation, and I told him my concerns, I really didn't approve it because of that situation of being industrial in a, in a residential area, but he did say he did own another 100 acres up the road, and I'm just thinking, maybe you ought to go over there and build it on another 100 acres, the, the, I mean, that's only a suggestion, but, you know, we want to keep it as a residential in our area, not that it's industrial, and that's basically what I have to say. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, sir. Anyone else? Not seeing anyone else coming forward. We're closing public comment. Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman? Um, thank you. I would move to defer this for, until a next meeting, or till the applicant would like to bring it back, to give him time to consider a PUD with his engineers, and bring it back before us, either way.
I have a motion and a second for the discussion.
Doug, I'm, I don't disagree with the motion, but is that motion proper? Is it legal? They, they've asked for an industrial zone, and we're asking them to consider something else.
Right, well, I, I mean, you're asking for a deferral. We'll have a meeting with the applicant at some point, you know, we're getting to the holidays, so it might be a little tight right now, we'll see if we can't do that, but ultimately, it's going to be up to him whether or not he wants to continue moving forward with the light industrial request, or if he wants to change it to a planned development. If he does, we'll just bring it back when it's ready for a planned development request. That probably won't be at the next meeting, probably won't be at the meeting after that, quite frankly, it'll probably be a couple of months down the road, but, but that's a discussion that we can certainly have with the applicant on that.
So it's a proper motion?
I believe it is.
Thank you.
Any other discussion on the motion?
I guess I got one. Why would, why would we want to put that stipulation on this particular project? Why would we want to do that?
If, if I can explain my motion, I, I asked the applicant, he said he wasn't opposed to doing that. I'm going to be a no vote if we move on it today for the, just for the fact that it's a rezoning to industrial, light industrial. I, I think it, I agree with the applicant, the occasion, I think this is an appropriate place for this development, based on the track record of what we've approved and sent to the county commission and their actions, I think that a PUD has the chance of helping the applicant get through there. He said he wasn't familiar with it, and he was not opposed to waiting to go check it out. This does not limit him to bring it back just the way it is with no changes, and if he does that after looking at a PUD and considering it, I'll vote for it, and he can send it on to the commission.
Yeah, appreciate that. From my point of view, that area there is going to be what it is, whether it's a storage unit, or whether it's whatever, so I just think the rezoning is not out of line for what's going to happen there, but anyhow, we'll move on to that. Okay, thank you.
Call the room.
Jeff Phillips?
Yes.
Mike Kush? Lee Vogel?
No.
Charlotte P.?
Yes.
Trey Gooch?
No.
Jim Thompson?
Michael Shirley?
Yes.
Jason Beavers?
No.
Amber Brown? Pettis Reed?
No.
Motion fails.
Motion fails. We're back up.
I'll make a motion that we approve with staff, any staff comments necessary?
Second.
A motion. And a second for discussion.
Mr. Chairman, again, Mr. Thompson said that this is going to be what it's going to be in that area, and that's what the planning commission does. We, we help, this is a rezoning, so if we rezone it to light industrial, we are opening the door for all of the things that are related to light industrial. I, I, I like this plan, I don't even think it's the wrong thing, but one day this may sell, and the buyer can bulldoze it, or if we, this is just a concept, this is not binding. He could, after getting light industrial, sell it, or decide to develop something else that's allowed in light industrial, and I, I don't know that that's the right thing for this side of that road as I look at it, so I'll be voting no on this motion.
Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Call the room.
Jeff Phillips?
Yes.
Mike Kush?
Yes.
Lee Bogel?
Yes.
Charlotte P.?
No.
Trey Gooch?
Yes.
Jim Thompson?
Yes.
Michael Shirley?
No.
Jason Beavers?
Yes.
Amber Brown?
No.
Pettis Reed?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Motion carries. Moving now to item three. Laws bowling for WB Real Estate, REZ 25014, location Ocala Road. Commissioner District Nine, Joshua James. Size of site, approximately 21 acres. Tax map, 95. Parcels 9.01, 9.05, 9.06, 9.07, and 9.09, north side of I-840. Existing zoning is residential medium density, RM. Proposed zoning is planned unit development for various commercial uses. Mr. Damasi?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. This item will look familiar to the Commissioners. This item was deferred from the Planning Commission's August 11, 2025 meeting for the applicant to work with staff on timing and funding for proposed traffic improvements. I will point your attention to the staff report. You'll see that I tried to update it as best as I could just to kind of present some additional information on things. You'll notice on the first page, this application, of course, was submitted prior to Plan Rutherford being adopted by the Planning Commission back in September. So I left the discussion there regarding the previous comprehensive plan, but then also included a little bit of verbiage on what Plan Rutherford calls for this area, which is fairly similar to what you see under the previous comprehensive plan. I won't go into the whole lot of the background with this like I did the first time. You can read the staff report about what it is he's proposing to do. I'm sure the applicant will make a brief presentation about that as well. I will say that the primary discussion point that we had on this was the timing and the funding of those traffic improvements. Now, since that time, when it was deferred, you know, the applicant, or the Planning Commission had asked the, you know, staff to work with them to come up with some sort of like a developer agreement like we did for the Burgess Farms property. That is still a work in progress, but something I did want to point out and something that the applicant is offering while we're still working through that process is that the applicant has committed to contribute up to $100,000 towards signalization and roadway improvements. And that's included in the pattern book that the applicant has provided, the updated pattern book, which is included on your iPads. We have had a number of meetings with the applicant's team and also with TDOT to discuss the potential improvements to the intersection of Ocala Road and Alma Ville Road and at the I-840 and Alma Ville Road interchange. You recall, it wasn't just this particular project we were looking at, but the other properties that Commissioner Shirley was referencing just a little bit ago in the last application for those properties on the southwest quadrant, if you will, of the Alma Ville Road and 840 interchange. The applicant's design engineer, Matt Taylor with SEC, is here. He's come up with kind of a blueprint, if you will, for what improvements are required for this interchange based on the traffic studies that were done for both the property, properties that are the subject of this request as well as those other properties on the southwest quadrant of the interchange. And again, we're still kind of a work in progress on that. It is taking, just taking time like anything of this nature. It's a little more complicated. But the fact that the applicant is proposing to contribute up to $100,000 for those improvements that would be born or would be required because of what his requirements are for his traffic study, he's hoping that that would be enough that the Planning Commission would consider moving this application forward. A lot of the improvements that have been identified, I don't think this particular project would necessarily be contributing to most of what his would be looking at. We'd probably be looking at signalization at Ocala Road and Alma Ville Road. And if I remember right, Mike, wasn't there a right turn off of the, that ramp? Or I thought, was that not the eastbound ramp? Okay, okay. And that was the one I was thinking about, the westbound, okay. So those would help with those particular improvements, his portion of that. So the applicant is present. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have at this time.
Questions for staff?
Doug, I mean, I just feel that their contribution to traffic is very minimal. But I guess the question on the $100,000 offer, does that come through us? Or is that something, I'm sure the Commission has to approve that.
The overall agreement will have to eventually be approved by the County Commission. And once we have, I know that that's something, the framework's still being worked on. But once that framework is in place, that is something that you might look at. You might get a chance to review, but ultimately, it will be required to be approved by the County Commission. That's correct.
We'll ask at this time that the applicant or representative come forward. Good evening, sir.
Thank you. I was hoping to make it through the night without having to, well, having to talk, so. But Matt Taylor of SEC, I've also got my clients back here as well. You know, we went through, we did an opinion of cost on three separate improvements. One of those is a signal at the intersection of Ocala and Alma Ville, a signal at the eastbound ramp on 840 in Alma Ville, which is going to be the south side of the interstate where Mike is pointing there, and then a right turn lane on the eastbound ramp going back towards Smyrna there. I think it's important that really the traffic study identified that it's not this project that is saying those improvements need to be made. I think it's reiterating that there's delay problems and issues today. And we will contribute some more traffic to that, but my client's willing to essentially put in his portion of those improvements. We went through, if you remember six-ish months ago when the Burgess preliminary plat came through, we kind of laid out a framework of cost sharing on these off-site improvements where it's not entirely warranted by the development. And so we did the exact same thing here. We took our traffic load, what the traffic load is today and what it will be in three or four or five years, whatever our build-out time there is, and said, "Hey, here's what our percentage is," which came out to roughly about 10%, which came out to roughly about $100,000 or just a little bit under that. And so we put in the pattern book. While the legal framework is still getting worked out, our pattern book, we felt like was binding enough that we're saying, "Look, we'll contribute $100,000 before our first," I forget if we said building permit or CBO. And so that binds us, but we'll also, we're perfectly agreeable to the legal framework once Nick and his guys get that drawn up. And it can either come back here or just go to the County Commission, whatever y'all desire. The plan itself has not changed since we were here in, I think, August. Is that right? The plan itself has not changed. The only thing that has changed is our written commitment on the $100,000 contribution and then us developing and getting TDOT sign off on the traffic study.
Questions for the applicant?
I do just have a question just as I try to make sense of the cost. I appreciate you breaking out that framework because it does make sense to me. I think that, just from my perspective, is a great contribution, especially due to the limited amount of impact that the project is going to have related to traffic. But where does the rest of the burden lie as far as the costs? So if they are going to make this contribution?
That's going to be borne by, I mean, there'll be several parties with this. There was this particular application. There was that other project that we talked about on the southwest side of 840 and Alma Ville Road. There was some discussion about some of the Smyrna developments also because of all the traffic that they do. Now, we're still working through some of that. And then, of course, you know, there'd have to be some involvement from the County on that, on that side of things as well. So that's the part that's needing to be worked out as far as that goes, as far as how much each party. But like Matt had said just a moment ago, a lot of it was based on the amount of trips that they're generating and how much they're contributing to the overall increase in traffic in the area. And Mike, feel free to jump in if I misstated anything.
Any way to know how much the subdivision right down the street has paid and road impact these?
You're talking about, you're talking about South Haven?
Yes.
Well, they actually did a couple of things. First being the full-dep reclamation of a good chunk of Ocala Road. When they first started developing that, as we've talked about in the past, Ocala Road was built when they put in 840. It was really just, they threw down some pavement and had a road. When all the construction equipment started going up and down through there, it pretty much destroyed it. So we had the applicant, or the, not the applicant, the developer of South Haven do full-dep reclamation. I don't think it was the entire way, but it was a good chunk of the road. Now, something else that that developer did, that section right there that Mike's highlighting, that did not exist when they came in. They were responsible for putting that stretch of Ocala Road in because before what Ocala Road did is kind of came in and went up old shores, really, is what it did. So they, that was the requirement that they add in that portion of Ocala Road.
They also did the turn lane improvements on Alma Ville that you said there.
Yes, yes.
Any more questions? One quick one. Matt, how did you come up with 10%?
We projected our traffic versus what the total traffic was at each one of those intersections. So some of the, some of the intersections, like the Ocala at Alma Ville, we projected our share there at 16%. But then if I go to one of the ramps, it was at 11%, the other at 8%. And whenever you did all those together, you know, it was 10 or 11%, whatever our equitable share was. And so we just said, "All right, if the signal at Ocala and Alma Ville is $325,000, our share of that's 16%." So we did that at each intersection. And it come up to, I think our total was about, plus we added in some engineering costs, I think our total was about $98,000, so we just rounded it to 100.
Anything else?
Thank you.
If not, thank you, Matt. We will now open it for public comment. If anyone has anything to say, we ask that you come forward at this time. No one coming forward. The comment is closed. Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman. I move to approve with all staff comments and the execution of a development agreement that's being worked out.
Okay.
Second.
And a second. Further comments? Please call the room.
Jeff Phillips?
Aye.
Mike Kush?
Aye.
Lee Bogel?
Yes.
Charlotte P.?
Yes.
Trey Gooch?
Yes.
Jim Thompson?
Yes.
Michael Shirley?
Yes.
Jason Beavers?
Yes.
Amber Brown?
Yes.
Pettis Reed?
Yes.
Motion carries.
It does carry. Just remember, all rezoning regulation amendment requests will be considered at the January 15, 2025 Board of Commissioners meeting unless deferred or withdrawn by the Planning Commission or the applicant. Staff reports and other business. Mr. Damasi?
Yes, sir. I will be brief. Consistent with our bylaws, we do need to appoint a nominating committee for Planning Commission Chair and Vice Chair for calendar year '26. We have reached out, or I have reached out, to Charlotte P., Michael Shirley, and Trey Gooch, and they have all agreed to serve on this committee. I guess we just need just a vote of acclamation on that.
Do we have a motion to that these will be approved by acclamation? Motion made. Second?
Second.
Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, we have it by acclamation. So it has been approved. We appreciate you taking care of that.
They will make their report at the day meeting in January. So you've got plenty of time to fight and claw about who's going to be Chair and Vice Chair for the next few weeks. I don't have anything further other than to say, you know, we're coming up to the Christmas and New Year season. Just want to thank all of you for all the time and effort you put into these meetings. And, you know, you help us do our jobs, quite frankly. We do appreciate everything that you do. I pray that you all have a happy and safe holiday season, Christmas and New Years. Looking forward to a lot of big things next year. We got a lot of things accomplished this year. There's a whole lot more that we need to do. We all know that. But just wanted to at least tell you my appreciation, so.
Thank you, Doug, and just have to say Merry Christmas and we're adjourned.